Okay, the Planning Commission will come to order. Roll call please.
Mr. Lasko?
Here.
Ms. King?
Here.
Mr. Decker?
Here.
Mr. Usher?
Here.
Mr. Paul?
Thank you all for coming out. I think this is the biggest crowd that we've ever had and it's all good. So, I'm gonna go through the departments here to see who wishes to speak for a particular department. If there's nobody here to speak towards a department, that department head is gonna be excused, okay? Does anybody here wanna speak to Police Department and Combined Dispatch? I don't see any hands. Chief? I know you're here somewhere.
Good night.
You're a chief.
Good night.
Is anybody here to speak to the Fire Department?
One.
We have one, okay. Library? Anybody here for the library? Okay, whoever's here for the library? I'm not sure who is.
We're not.
Is that a hand to speak?
No.
Can you please stand up? I can't tell who that was. Okay, you guys are excused. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody here for the Historical Commission? I don't see any hands, so I know David is here. Thank you. Human Relations and Fair Rent. Anybody here to speak to the Human Relations and Fair Rent? Okay, I don't see anybody here, so Adam and whoever else?
Anna.
Anna?
And Darlene.
And Darlene? Thank you for coming, you're excused. Information Technology. Anybody here to speak to Information Technology? I don't see any hands, so Karen? I know you're here, thank you. Health Department. Anybody here for the Health Department? Okay, whoever the representative is here? Thank you. The Redevelopment Agency. Anybody here to speak to the Redevelopment Agency?
I'd like to speak, but I'm not in charge.
Okay?
Can we come up?
No, not now. We'll call it a no. Is anybody here to speak for the Economic and Community Development? Includes Business Development and Tourism and Arts Commission. We have somebody here? Okay? Anybody here for the Racks and Parks?
I see a couple of hands.
Yeah, okay. Who's here to represent Racks and Parks?
Ms. Canuse, who's here? Nick? Nick?
Are you guys all here? Okay. Transportation, Mobility and Parking. Anybody here to speak to Transportation, Mobility and Parking?
One.
One, okay. Anybody here for Public Works? Includes WPCA and Building Management. Okay?
We only have one person for Public Works? Oh, two?
No, Anthony.
Oh, no, that's their staff.
Anthony's here.
Okay.
Anybody here for the Board of Ed? Okay? Planning and Zoning, Steve, you gotta stay so you don't get to go home. Okay. So, I've had requests, because we have a lot of kids here, they have to go, you know, go do homework, go to bed, so I'm gonna take the Board of Ed first. So, the way this works is whoever wants, wishes to speak for the Board of Ed, I'll call on you, come up, identify yourself, make your remarks, and then the representatives from the Board of Ed will answer or comment however best they can. If they don't have an answer, we'll get back to you. I'm holding this public hearing open for written comments until next Wednesday, 5:00. Okay, so I'll also make a comment about backup material. Backup material, it might be there already or it's gonna be all that we have available on the Finance webpage, okay? That's all the backup material, is all being put there as we speak, or it might be there already, I'm not sure, as of this afternoon. So, if you look at things and you have comments, you can get it into Steve Kleppen at Planning and Zoning by Wednesday, 5:00, next week, okay? So... Who's here from the Board of Ed?
Tom, right? Tom?
I saw Tom, Tom Hamlet, is anybody else? The department heads. But whoever, so Tom is here and whoever else that you wanna call up or however you are, it'll be up to you, okay? All right, so Board of Ed, let me see the hands and we'll call on you one at a time. All right, this lady here, her hand up first, so please identify yourself, where do you live for the record?
Sure.
And we'll take it from there. And they tell me that thing goes up and down, so the handle.
The whole thing.
That's what they told me. There you go.
Hi, my name is Sasha Carr, I'm at 114 Perry Avenue. I'm a parent of a third grader at Silvermine Elementary School, and I'd just like anybody who's here from Silvermine to stand up for a minute, just to see how many of us are here tonight. Thank you. As a member, as a representative of the Silvermine parent community, I just want to say that we are hoping that the city approved the Board of Ed's proposal to redesign the completely unmanageable and unsafe driveway layout that we have at Silvermine School. It's not a new issue, it's been a problem for many years, but it's gotten worse recently due to increased traffic in and out of the school. Now that we've been made a full magnet, we have parents driving from all over Norwalk to be there, we have additional staff for our wonderful magnet program, and it makes the situation unmanageable. As a member of the SGC and PTA president, I've had mothers with babies in strollers walk up to me in tears at pickup, because the only way for them to pick up their child, if they have another one in a stroller, is to walk that stroller up a single narrow driveway with traffic going both ways, which also, there's an intersection which the buses are trying to use, and they feel like they're risking theirs and their children's lives. When we drop off, we also have to go down that tiny, narrow, two-way driveway, go all around the parking lot to drop off, and I'm constantly seeing people almost get hit by cars. We have, because you have to use stairs or you basically have to walk up this driveway to get from the parking lot to the school. It's hard to understand how bad it is if you don't see it for yourself, but members of the school facilities staff have seen it and they understand that it's a problem, the superintendent has seen it, other people from the district tab, members of the Board of Ed have seen it, and that's why it ended up in this year's budget. They've all agreed that something needs to be done. To put it simply, it's a tragedy waiting to happen, and I hope you, the city, will help us avoid that tragedy from happening on the city's watch. Thank you for your time.
Anybody else which is to speak regarding the Board of Ed?
Hi, my name is Lizzy Shippun, I live at 32 Starwood Ave. in Norwalk. I'm also speaking on behalf of Silvermine Elementary School as the school principal. I echo everything that Dr. Carr has shared with you. The only other piece of information that I would add that makes time of the essence on this project and not worth waiting two years instead of one or three years or whatever the plan might be, it also has come to my attention, since I am in Silvermine, just in the last few years, our fleet of buses has increased. Over the last two years, we now have two more buses, a total of nine buses, and I was just informed that the new start time next year, they're going to be adding additional buses. At this point, Silvermine is the largest elementary school in the district, we also have the largest number of school buses in the district because we're a magnet school. With the addition of the two more buses, or one or two more buses that may be coming to us next year, we will have no place to put them. We are back-to-back-to-back all the way through that front circle. It's going to require that then we have buses up on Perry Avenue, which is a very narrow street. If that happens, all traffic will be completely stopped. So, I just wanna reiterate this, I think the timing with the new, the additional fleet of buses is gonna be really important to get this done sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Oh, wait, I have a quick question for you. Because the...
You have to speak into the mic.
Sorry. Because everything has, all this overcrowding, is the school over capacity of what it's supposed to be? How many students is the school originally built for?
That's a wonderful question. So, originally the school, well, the school was originally built for, they don't have the exact number, but I was told between 300 and 350 students. The driveway and the lower parking lot were designed for that. Some years ago, they did another addition, and now we're up to 500 students. So, the parking lot does not, wasn't built to accommodate that number of students.
And how are you accommodating the school, all those children in the classroom and the school space in the building?
We're at capacity in all of our classrooms, but we are not over capacity at this point. We are right at our maximum.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to clap after each one, everybody's good, every speaker's good, okay?
My name is Claire Schoen, I live at Centwood Lane in Norwalk, and I just have two questions and a comment. The first is what happened to instructional technology, which is very near and dear to my heart, I don't know why that was not funded when it was requested, I'd like to know why. Is Cranberry School funding in this year's upcoming fiscal budget or the next year? Because the document online has it in two different places and it's not clear as to when Cranberry Schools, the Cranberry School, $35 million, I believe, when that funding will happen. And then the last thing in the comment is I would just like to say I am all in favor of the funding for the new Norwalk High School, however it is that you manage to do it, because I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Cranberry Schools for next year.
So, one clarification, the finance recommended numbers are out there from the Finance Director.
Right.
Okay, so we're not here to, we're not gonna change or do anything, whether his numbers are his numbers. So, Planning Commission's gonna mark up the, so we have the Finance Directors, then you're gonna have the Planning Commission's recommendations, which will go to the mayor, and the mayor will make his recommendations, I believe then the Board of BET, Board of Investment and Taxation, and then it goes to Common Council. So, we're not here to...
So, is there a way to find out why certain things were cut?
They weren't...
They weren't, that was the, not cut, there was a...
Not funded?
There's a department request. So, the Finance Director, however, you read his letter and everything else, right? So, he funded whatever those numbers are. So, we're not here to address why he didn't or whatever, we don't know, or whatever that rationale. Okay?
Okay. And Cranberry School, you're saying is now for fiscal year '21, '22?
No, Tom can answer, we're not gonna, Tom can answer.
Well, I wanna know, so that's...
Yeah, yeah, no, no, whatever your questions are, Tom can answer.
You want me to answer now or...?
No, answer now, and we're gonna have, as department heads, as we called departments, department heads, please come forward and you can sit up front.
Okay, I'm Tom Hamlet, I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the School District. I did see that the City Finance Director has posted his recommendations on the city website, I did review them, and what I read, unless I have misread them, included Cranberry School for the upcoming fiscal year, funding in 2020, '21. The technology request had been $700,000 each year from the district IT Director. The Finance, City Finance Director's recommendation appears to have zeroed that out in each of the next five years. I do wanna point out particularly, just for everyone here, that the Finance Director's recommendation right now is just that, it's a recommendation. The Planning Commission has the right and the authority, indeed the responsibility, to come up with its own recommendations, and those recommendations may take the Finance Director's recommendations into account, but certainly if the Planning Commission thinks that the project should be funded, then the Planning Commission has the right and the authority to do that, so...
Tom, do you think that...
Microphone.
Oh, sorry. Tom, do you think that the instructional technology piece based on there was an inquiry? You could put a little bit more together for us so that we'll have it at our next meeting?
Yeah, I will ask the IT Director. He had a conflict tonight. He is interested in commenting on the City Finance Director's recommendation to zero fund that, and I will let him know that you will have a written comment period open for several days, and I'm certain he will provide you written comments.
Okay, thank you.
For a week, actually. One week, right?
Yeah, sit up front here, in case there's anyone. There's gonna be more, Tom. Is there a...
The comment period is for one week from tonight.
Until Wednesday, until Wednesday next week.
Just a week later.
Yeah. Anybody else for... Oh, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Randy Snyder, I'm speaking on behalf, I live at Fort Brierwood Road. I live about a half mile from Silvermine Elementary, I'm speaking on behalf of being local as well as having two kids at Silvermine Elementary, a first grader and a fifth grader. And I just wanna talk a little bit about the parking situation and the driveway, because we have to actually, even though I live a half mile away, we have to drive our kids every day, just because it is, it's scary when people are coming in and out of there, even having them walk in that area. I have a fifth grader, normally, when I was a fifth grader, I walked to school, it wasn't really a problem, but we can't let them walk because it's really dangerous. More than that, people locally are getting ticketed and the police are getting calls, and as someone who lives right here, that's a little scary too. I don't wanna have to drop my kid off, not have a place to park, worry about the police coming out, I don't need to work. I don't need to, you know, it's just, it's overwhelming, and it's also, not just for the kids, but open school night this year, I decided because the parking situation is kind of scary, that I would walk, because again, I have my way, so I walked there and on the way coming home, it's very dark there, there's no lights, and when people are parking up on the very minimal sidewalks there, you have to walk in the street, there's no other way to do it. It was the scariest thing. I got home, I was shaking, because literally there just is no place to go, and I was thinking, I'm so glad my boys aren't with me, because they're typical boys and they wander, and I don't know what would have happened. So, I'm really hoping that you'll take it very seriously, I know a lot of people are asking for funds for things in different areas, but I went online and looked up a few facts about kids and walking in school zones, and trying to understand what are the ramifications of this. And what was scary to me, and I think would be interesting to bring up here, is that all the facts were on lawyer sites. So, that's another thing to keep in mind, because when kids are put in so much danger, you know, they come flocking out. So, I really hope that, you know, it's in mind, it's taking the police, it's taking the parents, and most of all, it's hurting our kids, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Hold on one second.
I'm calling on Joe over there.
Okay. So, I have a question for... Can I just ask Tom a question before we start?
Microphone. No, I just put it in front of him.
So, Tom, there's quite a few requests for Silvermine in the budget, and you have to refresh my memory here a little bit from all the facilities planning. It sounds like Silvermine's at capacity, we're putting a new cafeteria in there, are there...
Don't talk about stuff that we're not, you know...
Okay.
Stay on point, everybody, please.
All right, but I'm staying on point because I need to understand the driveway situation. Are we gonna have a situation where in a few years, we're gonna have to do some major renovations there? Is there gonna be any kind of build out there to accommodate the growth? Are we gonna put the change in driveway in and then three years later be revamping? What's the...
At this point, there's no plans for an addition to Silvermine. It was talked about conceptually at one point, because there is an interest in expanding the district's dual-language program through the eighth grade. The research suggests that students require seven years to gain proficiency in a new language, and so stopping at fifth grade is not really ideal, I'm sure that this can, you know, expound on this, but at this point, the district's plan is to build out a dual-language house at West Rock School, and so to avoid having to do an addition at Silvermine. Ideally, we'd love to see a K-8 school at Silvermine, but it just doesn't seem feasible given that site, it's on septic, and it's, the area down back is in a flood zone, as I understand it, so it just doesn't look feasible to add an addition onto Silvermine to make that to six to eight. So, the plan at this point is to expand the dual-language program, but to expand it at West Rock's. So, I don't see, the capacity is the capacity, they're at capacity, which is great, because it means we've got interest around the community in a dual-language, in this dual-language program. What the Board may do, what the Board of Education may do, in light of the changing demographics and the increase in dual-language, is consider starting a dual-language school at some other school in Norwalk, but I don't believe there's any plan to add more than four classrooms up in each grade at Silvermine.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Joe Jenderko.
No, you can pull it up.
This guy's gonna be... Joe Jenderko, 163 Chestnut Hill Road, Norwalk. I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a teacher at Ponus Ridge Middle School, but also as a unit official. I can't tell you how many emails I get from staff at Silvermine, who tell me that there are dangers in that parking lot and something really should be done about it. We get emails from stewards, we get emails from teachers all the time. I've done my best to kind of funnel them to the right people on the Board of Ed side, and I'm glad to see that it's at least being recommended, and hopefully with your push-through, it will get done in the summer. I'm also here to speak tonight about Ponus Ridge Middle School and the subsequent cut to our furniture. You build a $44 million building and the city decides to cut the furniture, it's, for lack of a better term, very short-sighted and possibly even stupid or even negligent. The furniture that's in Ponus right now is a collection of, like many of the schools here tonight, I'm sure Silvermine deals with it too, it's a mix-match of stuff. Stuff's been broken, stuff's been repaired, stuff doesn't match, it doesn't fit a room, you make do with it. Ponus has an opportunity now to kind of really set the tone. All the other schools that are in the pipeline to rebuild, Jefferson, the new Columbus at Ely, and renovated Columbus, all have in their budget a line item for furniture, and somehow Ponus, the first school that was actually built, didn't have a line for furniture, and they had to go back for a special assessment or a special allocation, and now that allocation is cut. So, I really think to open up a STEAM school, first STEAM school in the state, to then give us old furniture, to give us rundown material, really sets the wrong tone for the building, sets the wrong tone to our community, and it really sets the tone that we value education in name only, on the name on a building, it's gonna be bright and shiny on the outside, and it's gonna be a little crusty and dirty on the inside. So, I really wish you guys would take a look at that. I understand that the recommendation wasn't made by you, but that recommendation is really short-sighted and a negative to our building. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Michelle Tiani, I live on 36 Franch Street in Norwalk. I'm a parent and a guardian of Tracy Magnet School, and I would like everybody...
I need you to speak in the microphone, please.
Do you mind starting over, just because I don't speak in the microphone?
My name is Michelle Tiani, I live on 36 Franch Street in Norwalk, and I'm a parent and a guardian of Tracy Magnet School. I would like everybody that is here for Tracy Magnet School to please raise your hand. I'm excited to be here tonight to speak on behalf of the Schools' Parent Teacher Association, Student Governance Council, and the Foundation of Students who attend Tracy School. There is absolutely nothing better than hearing the sounds of kids playing and enjoying themselves at recess. This is where the racing down slides follow each other around the playground, simply using their environment as an adventure. As an incoming parent in the school, one of my main focuses has been to improve the outdoor play area, where child builds memorial care gear, as well as develops physically maintaining social. It is my understanding that there has been a line item for the Tracy playground renovations since 2012 and has yet to meet the top of the list to be completed. My daughter now plays on the same playground my husband did when Tracy went to 30 years ago. With the closing of school, we like to play around the weekends, but it is deteriorating before our eyes. The school playground isn't only used by the students of Tracy, but also the kids who live in the neighborhood, along with the ones who attend sports activities on the field after school and on the weekends. There is a long list of areas that are problematic, but to name a few, the rails on the stairs are quickly closed off and re-rated by pedestrians and it's screwed to the loose. The edging around the playground is uneven and broken in certain areas, causing children to trip and fall daily. The monkey bars, along with the large spider climb, are not developmentally appropriate for the younger students, and they are prohibited to go on outdoor recess. My daughter has personally gotten clothes and figures stuck in the rusted areas, ripping them, and is limited on the areas of playground she can play at recess, which doesn't seem fair. Myself, as well as the rest of the Tracy community that is able to attend tonight, along with the 29 emails from parents and members of the community who aren't here, are in support of the launch needed Tracy playground renovations, as well as the Rock Valley Initiative that is being requested by the Department of Transportation to support our students to safely get them to school. We need your help and support to offer Tracy Magnet School a renovated playground that will be treasured by all future Tracy pups, after-school participants, and neighboring children. Some parents, along with students who have come tonight, also have something else that they would like to say. Thank you for your time.
Okay, let's hear some clapping for the artwork.
Hello, my name is Caroline Brooks, and I am in support of a new Tracy playground that is currently unsafe.
Hello, my name is Annabelle Gardner, and I am in support of a new Tracy playground because it is not safe.
Hi, my name is Liza Zima, and I'm in support of a new Tracy playground because it is getting people hurt.
Hi, my name is Daniel Komstundaki, and I am in support of the new Tracy playground because it's rusted and moldy.
Hello, my name is Lily Brooks, and I am here to support a new Tracy playground because the footprint is rusty.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good job, guys.
I should take a lesson in brevity from those children.
Go ahead, Nick.
Hi, my name is Stacy Sebastian, I live at 127 Perry Ave. I have three children that go to Silvermine Elementary School, kid in part in third and fifth grade. I just wanted to reiterate how dangerous it is, these children, some of these will get hit by a car. I also wanted to clarify that when the parking lot was built, it was to accommodate the smaller school that originally was Silvermine Elementary School. They built an addition, they did not do anything to the parking lot. So, I really think that this is something that you guys need to get on top of, these children, the parents, we deserve a baby place for our kids to come into school and have exit school day.
Thank you.
Nick? Is Nick here from Parks and Racks?
Yes.
Sorry, we're out of order a little bit, but as I recall, when you presented to us, it was Tracy and Silvermine have the top priority with the playgrounds.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right.
So, those were the two schools targeted in appropriation.
Right.
Okay.
Come on up, but I have a note for Redevelopment. Who's still here from Redevelopment? Is anybody here, department head from Redevelopment? She left?
Yes.
Okay. No, I didn't, but, okay, next.
Good evening, I'm Kristen Wolfstein, I live at Fort Rudon Lane.
Yes.
No, you didn't, but... Okay, next.
Good evening, I'm Kristen Wolfstein. I live at 4 Rudolph Lane. Tonight I am here as the principal of Cranberry Elementary School. We have some other members that you'll hear from. There are many things that I could say about Cranberry School. We are celebrating our sixtieth year, and I have to say, in the sixty years, we have had minimal renovations or capital improvements. And I shared with our students that this was something that the city was contemplating, and I thought it might be helpful for you to hear their words instead of just the adults. Our school is old. We need everything to work better because things are always breaking. Our morning announcements only work hard at the time. They're always telling us they're having technical difficulties. It's the same thing when we have assemblies, or we have a concert, or a play. We work hard, so it's really frustrating when things don't work right. Our second student. We need a full gym and a separate cafeteria. We don't have enough room to run or play games and exercise. If you want us to learn, we need exercise. It helps us focus. We also need a separate cafeteria. Ours is old, crowded, and dusty. It's really only a gym. A student said, "As you can see, we don't have enough space in our classroom. You can't walk by the desk without bumping someone. We don't have anywhere to sit and work on projects, and there's no room to hang our charts. We're doing all of this wonderful work with thinking maps this year, and you can't hang anything up to see." We need a bigger stage for our play and our concerts. Our stage has to be a classroom now for band and strings, but there's not even enough room for our instruments. The hallways are too dark. I come to school happy, but walking down the dark hallways is kind of depressing. Then I'm in a weird mood, and it's time to start morning work and learn. Our school should be brighter and make kids feel good about coming to school. And our last two. I think there should be a bigger parking lot. There's not enough room for all of our buses and cars. And sometimes people go too fast, and it's just not safe. The cars and the buses almost hit each other every day because they have to keep crossing. And finally, this is one of our eight-year-olds. It's sad that we don't have enough room. I always see kids sitting in the halls working. There are kids working in groups, but there are also kids who have to work out there with their teachers because there's nowhere else to go. If we get a new building, everyone will have a good, happy place to learn. So those are the words of our eight, nine, and ten-year-olds when we asked them, "What is it that you think we need, and why do we need a new building?" We've done everything that we can over the years to keep Cranberry as beautiful as it can be, but it's time for a change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Monica Zikidis.
Just put the, come closer to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Monica Zikidis, and I currently have three kids.
Where do you live?
I live in 26 Blake Street. I have three kids attending Cranberry. I have a third grader, a second grader, and a kindergarten, and another child in the range in the next two years. I am a member of School Governance Council and am a member of the PTO, a designation to being a mom and working full-time. We have a very wonderful, and we're happy to have a lucky, we're lucky to have a good community because a lot of our family members volunteer and give their time to make sure the kids are successful and have a good experience in the school. As the principal mentioned, our school is sixty years old with minimum renovation done in the last years as I've been there. It's been deteriorating, and it's very noticeable. Our kids are the future and deserve safe and sustainable building. Our kids deserve more classroom space, brighter lighting, because it's really dark in the hallways, space for group learning activities, hands-on labs, and much, much more. Improved facilities and wood infrastructure are very important for producing good school outcomes. Our kids are future community leaders who deserve right education in a proper learning environment. Safe and proper building can play a crucial role in improving outcomes for students and our teachers. Cranberry has been placed on the bottom of the list for at least four years. As a community and taxpayers, we deserve a better building for the future leaders of our community, and I'm asking, please do not delay our project and give us a brand-new school.
Thank you. Now, is that the line? I saw the jam and get up, okay.
Good evening, my name is April Anderson. I live on 222 Clay. My daughter attends Cranberry Elementary School. To support both of our parents and Kristen in their appeal to board, I'd like to reach out a couple of things. It's time to put your running away around this, take a stand for our school and our kids. Every Cranberry parent should be attending tonight's planning mission meeting at 7:00 PM in the community's room for the city hall. This is dated February 27. In addition to that, there was a call-out today, or the same attendance by Cranberry School. But acting on Kristen's behalf and firmly by my daughter's behalf, part of one of the enrichment programs for last year's Cranberry School was a guide for children to design their own school. My younger daughter at the time wrote, "My blueprint will help school because it has a bigger platform in the building. We have a small building, but not on the space. I added a computer lab, so instead of opening one special per week, we can have all three days in a week with no repeats. I also have two-way door playgrounds that would be nice for extra reset. We know that kids need to move, but this is our plan for our new school. I put in an auditorium while right now the auditorium is shared with our gym. I also made a cafeteria since ours is shared with the gym. I made bigger classrooms, and bigger space will help our students to spread out. We are cramped and tiny classrooms and need to have some more room." Back in June, we started a petition at school. We had four hundred signatures from parents. Because of that petition, we also requested as SGC members to have a meeting there who assured us on June 26th that Cranberry School was in the hood. Thank you for this meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening, Michael Klein.
Raise this up.
Oh, yeah, the mic guy will help you.
Thank you. Silvermine.
The Silvermine mic guy.
My name happens to be Michael, and I appreciate that. I live on 27 Pottman Road in Milton, Connecticut. I am the site director at Cranberry. Just a few points of note, I am into Cranberry this year, and a few things that I have observed in my first year. I have wires hanging multiple places in multiple classrooms. Every classroom is near capacity, and every classroom is full. I have multiple classrooms, roughly about a half dozen, with multiple staff numbers occupying those rooms. There is little to no storage within our building. We have boxes and storage contraptions hung from the ceiling in our stage area. The biggest area, not to belabor the point, but we do have students working hallways and multiple times, are gymnasium levels as a cafeteria. The biggest thing that I have on my list is that there's appreciation for reading. In Norwalk, we make a commitment to developing children's ability and a love for literature and death. One of the things that came into my observation immediately at Cranberry is that we have no bookroom. We have no appreciate, there's no place for our teachers to have a communal place where they go collect books and use those books collectively for children. Our library is only thirteen hundred square feet when you look at it compared to the others in the district. It's about half to a third of the size of Norwalk. The commitment to developing a new school at Cranberry comes down to the commitment that we have for our children. Comes down to the resources, the space, and whatnot. Being able to support our children's love for reading, their development of reading, and the way that we can support that by having more space to be able to have those resources. Thank you.
Listen, the fire department is still here, so all those things that you said about hanging wires, it's not, everything is compliant, correct?
We had the fire department in last week for an inspection. Thank you.
Okay.
Lisa Britton, 24 Highland Avenue. Economics is about more of one thing, meaning less of another. I'm concerned that bonding out the proposed but not yet legislatively approved regional Norwalk High is bumping other long-term improvements and supplies over other school improvements, sports, recreational initiatives, and other things that parents have spoken to and will speak to tonight. As we struggle to fund the capital budget, I'm concerned that the city is still pursuing tax deferral programs with a $50,000 study set aside for tax incremental financing or tips. The public rejected these tax credit incentives, or whatever the city wants to use, along West Avenue a year ago. As we struggle to fund our schools, we continue to have developments like Poco that will be offered fifteen years of property tax credits. While we struggle tonight, and most of the people in this room are with the school system, we really have to start looking at what our priorities are because there is a limited amount of funding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Donna Smurnia Tompkins, 18 Shortcake Park. I would also like to talk about the capital expense for the new Norwalk High School. That figure stands at 220 million in your budget. The original figure was 200 million. You have to bond the entire amount, and we are not sure yet about that reimbursement. What is most troubling to me about this particular line item, first of all, it's gone up 10%, and we don't even have approved ed specs at this point. But listening to people talk about Cranberry, I can see the imperative there. I'm not seeing it here, and I know that Superintendent Adamowski told the Board of Education on December the 12th that this was time-sensitive, this was a use it or lose it, this was a if you bond it, we will fund it, and that is not true. I can find no evidence that you must do this this year. I agree with Heidi Keys, who asked Superintendent Adamowski that evening, shouldn't we vet this process? Should this go through the appropriate channels the way every other school project has, like Cranberry? There should go to the School Facilities Committee first. I think if people are approving this funding based on the idea that there is a use it or lose it, that doesn't exist. He may be able to get it into the budget after the school building bill is approved in some back room. He may be able to squeeze it in there, but the time sensitivity on our part doesn't exist, and I want you to be aware of that, and I would like you to prioritize the things that are more worthy of the expenses right now and have to be in Cranberry, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Margaret Kelly. I live at 28 Clamber Common in Milton, Connecticut. I'm a thirty-four-year veteran music teacher for the Norwalk Public Schools. I'm currently at Fox Run Elementary, and I also taught at Brookside, Maranac, Ponus, and Westrocks. And I'm really here on behalf of all the schools to ask for the restoration of the new pianos in the budget. I know that it probably appears to many to be a luxury item, but in reality, it really isn't. It's the primary instrument of instruction for the music teachers, starting at the elementary and all the way up to high school. When parents come to concerts, this is the instrument that is most likely going to be used to accompany the children singing or even orchestra playing, and I know this because I've done it for many, many years. And if there's keys missing, the pianos aren't working, they're fifty or sixty years old, it's going to diminish the experience for the audience, for the children, and really hinder the learning process for our students. So I'm asking on behalf of every school in Norwalk and every music teacher if we could please reconsider revamping or replacing some of these very old instruments that have been requested. Thank you very much for your time.
I have a question. How often are the pianos tuned?
We receive requests once in a year normally, around our spring concert time. Unless there is some major repair that needs to be made.
Oh, I have a question for you. This was something that caught my attention during all the reviews we went through. Can people, do you have like a specification for pianos that you need, like can people donate or raise money, or I'm just asking, or is it just the ones that are there want refurbished?
Well, most of the ones that, the reason for this was that many of them really need to be replaced completely. Everything has a shelf life, and even if you have refurbished some of the pianos, which they have been, I've played on some of them when I do rehearsals for All-City String Festival at different, at the high schools, there comes a point, and then nothing more can be done for them. They really need to go to a department store and have flowers put on them, so. But you don't want them for our, for our students at that point, so a new instrument is a better investment.
And with the instruments, do you, do they all have to be the same, or?
No, I would say that would be according to the size of the space you're putting in. You would want a baby grand in an auditorium like Brian McMahon High School, or Norwalk High, or the middle schools. I would say the elementary school in Upright would be fine, and probably that's the space limitations, because many of us are having concerts in the gym, as we've heard this evening. So it's the newness of the instrument that's important. Donated instruments are a big danger. I have gone to people's houses that offer to donate to our school, and I usually find they're in terrible shape, broken soundboards, broken pedals. You can pay as much to refurbish a piano as to buy a brand-new one.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
I'd just like to add that, you know, that I know Marge's work, she's a master in her field, so take what you say is very highly. You're an asset to the city.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, Erica Palma, 110 Perry Avenue. I'm here on behalf of Silvermine School and as a member of our Board of Education. So I'll start with Silvermine School and just build on what everyone said regarding the influx of traffic from buses and from cars, the way that the driveways configured, the lack of sidewalk space getting to and from Silvermine just because of overgrowth of trees, and then all the cars that add up on top of the sidewalk. And I'll build on it by saying that my family was personally impacted this year when my mother-in-law, who lives with us part of the year and often drives my daughter back and forth to Silvermine, even though we live right down the street, was hit by a car. So people are tearing out of that school because it is so backed up and congested, and there's a risk getting a ticket from our police force, and as a result of that, people are getting seriously injured in car accidents. So I'll ask you to continue to take that into consideration. With regard to the instructional technology cuts, I did just want to highlight that seventy-seven percent of jobs require some level of technology skills today. And if you're going to cut instructional technology, you're cutting our one-to-one Chromebooks, and therefore you're cutting equitable access to technology in this district. And if you cut equitable access to technology, that is what case studies have shown closes the gap in districts like ours. You're also compromising our cybersecurity. So with that, I happen to live with a cybersecurity expert, so I might, that's going to come out and speak as well. Thank you.
Michael Palma, 110 Perry Avenue. So three things. One, obviously, I'm a parent of a student at Silvermine. It's been pretty much belated up here, but it is extremely dangerous, both that drop-off and pickup. And if you want to drive by there, you will see exactly what we're talking about. As my wife mentioned, we're right down the street. There's, walking to school is not an option. There's no sidewalks, people have parked on the sidewalks, so you're forced to drive. If there's any kind of PTA meeting, or there's any sort of, you know, parent-teacher conferences, people have parked up U Street, definitely not adequate. I wasn't planning on talking about the furniture at Nathan Hale, but I worked in the school construction industry for, I mean for Ponus, I apologize, for eight years, and I did probably fifty ed specs missions as well as ED49 requests. I've never seen one without a new furniture budget in it. So when I heard it, I was pretty surprised. I just, like Joe mentioned, invest that much money into a school and not have new furniture, especially with a STEAM school, really just almost defeats the purpose of that. Maybe time can explain. I don't know that, do we not put that into the original ED49? We didn't put any furniture money?
The issue was that the district asked for $71 million for the entire Ponus project, which incorporated...
You might want to speak into the mic.
Sure, yeah. So the district originally had asked for $71 million in the capital budget several years ago to build the new lower school at Ponus and to do what's called a renovation as new on the existing six-to-eight building at Ponus. That appropriation request ultimately, when it made it through the city's process, was approved at $43 million. There's a big gap between $43 million and $71 million. So the $43 million is really enough to do the new lower school, which is completed and now is occupied, but the work that was left that could be done with the available funding at the Ponus six-to-eight campus is far less than a renovate as new. It's really putting in central air conditioning and doing abatement work and some of the things that go along with that. So for instance, when you're putting in ductwork, you've got to take the ceilings down, you've got to take the lights down, and so new lighting and new ceiling will go back up. But there are a number of things that are... But there are a number of things that are not included in the Ponus project that we know the community, the school community there is concerned about, because I've heard from them. The lockers, for instance, which are original to, when the building was originally constructed, there's no money set aside to replace lockers, there was no money set aside for furniture, and that was why we put in this request, because the concern is just simply that the teachers who were in that building have endured, you know, a pretty difficult situation with construction on the site for several years, having to move from their existing classrooms, move over to the new building as swing space, and then when they finally get back to their old classrooms, if this appropriation is not funded, they're going to come back to the old furniture, which is 40 or 50 years old.
Just lastly, on the technology budget, it was my understanding that part of that $700,000 was going towards cybersecurity upgrades, which now looks like it's completely cut out. I am in that space now. I can tell you that school districts, municipalities are specifically being targeted by criminals, specifically ransomware. You can open the paper or go on any website, you can see that, because they view them as low-hanging fruit, typically antiquated cybersecurity systems, so it really is just a ticking time bomb. It's not a matter of if, but when they're going to attack us. So to pull that out, it's just kicking the can down the road. The criminals are definitely going to see us as a potential victim, so to pull that out in a large budget like this kind of doesn't make sense, because we're going to wind up paying for it later on, so.
Good, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tyler Reverin, I'm on 35 Kings Street, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Narmack Elementary School, I'm a member of the SGC, and a parent of two kids, a third is in the pipeline, will be there at some point. We had, Narmack was supposed to be one of the more sizable recipients of the $5 million that had been budgeted in 2021 for cafeteria renovations. We actually don't have a cafeteria to renovate, we need one desperately, so we have, we have no cafeteria, and we have the smallest kitchen in the district, as I understand. It's really not much bigger than a kitchen in your house, totally inadequate. So if I can walk you briefly through the process, it's, if you haven't seen it, it's difficult to envision. So because there is no dedicated cafeteria, the kids line up at this tiny kitchen, they're in the hallway, they're noisy, because that's what kids tend to do, so they're interfering with construction that's happening while they're waiting in line to get to this kitchen window. There are carts in the hallway, kind of blocking one of the doors, and then they take their trays and they take their lunches into a rather cavernous, dank gym, where half of it has been divided. There are folding tables that were removed from the wall, pushed against the wall, they're taken down, and the kids are using those. On the other half of the wall, there are gym classes going on, it's extraordinarily loud. As you can imagine, the acoustics are not great in the first place, in half of the gym with the huge ceiling, and add to that the noise going on on the other side. So it's really the worst of both worlds, who have kids using the gym who can only use half of it, and then the, you know, the other kids are eating in a less than ideal situation. So we, as our SGC, we met with the school central office to look at other options, to see if there were cheaper ways to do this. There really are not, because of the layout, because of where the kitchen is now. In order to do something else, you would have had to, you know, tear apart the media center and take apart a server closet, which then couldn't be moved, so really no other option than to do this. And, you know, the other challenge with moving this into the next fiscal year, as I believe it's happened several years now, we've been talking about it for two years on the SGC, my kid is, my oldest has been there for three years, nothing has happened with the cafeteria project. This is also impacting plans we have to do the playground in the back of the school. The plan that had been presented and approved by the Board of Ed would have extended the space off the back of the media center slightly towards the playground to allow for an actual kitchen and cafeteria space for the kids to sit. Our playground plans are really on hold until this comes through. We can't do anything in the back of the school, the playground, until this has been resolved. So to conclude, I thank you for hearing us out. In my professional life, usually I'm the real estate table, I'm a planner for municipality in the area, and, you know, one of the challenges that we have every year, we do an annual grant allocation process to nonprofits, there's always more need than there is available funding. So in looking at the projects that are on here, they're all, they're all needy, but you know, as far as wants versus needs, I can't think of a more fundamental need than for the kids at our school to have a place to eat and for the staff to prepare for them. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Tom, I have a question regarding this. We actually had talked a little bit about this, but I forgot to send you an email on it. Can we get a further breakdown on some of these cafeteria expenses? Because I know we had some questions at the meeting, and I've actually been thinking about it the last week since that meeting, and I just would like to understand, like on the list, the numbers were very broad without a lot of specifics.
Yep. We have a detailed construction cost estimate on the Merrimack Kitchen and Cafeteria project, so we can give you...
That's not the 3.5 one, is it?
Yes, that's the 3.5 million.
Just for that one school?
Right, we have, yes, we have a detailed cost estimate that, you know, was prepared by a professional cost estimator, based on some original conceptual designs that were put together by an architect. So we've got a detailed cost estimate on that. The other two items that were requested was middle school cafeteria and kitchen renovation at $750,000, and that's based on our experience with renovations at, at West Rocks, as well as expanding the amount of work that we believe needs to be done in the kitchen. And then I think the third item was $790,000, if I remember correctly, which was for district-wide kitchen and cafeteria equipment, and we do have an itemized list of the equipment by location. That was a recommendation that was put together by the district's food service management company, Chartwell's, and this is a variety of things. Part of what they're attempting to do is to speed up the throughput, if you will, of the speed through which children can get through the lunch line, because that's one of the impediments to creating a more civilized, relaxed dining environment for our students, which is what we're trying to do. And we believe it's also one of the reasons, based on, you know, feedback we've received from students themselves, we ask them, well, how come you're not buying lunch today, or you're not taking lunch today? Frequently, they'll say, oh, I don't want to spend all my time in the line, and then I don't get to recess, go out to recess. And so we want to do things like put in additional kiosks so students can get through the line more quickly.
I took a poll in the last week of about 20 second and third graders, so I got a really good rundown on the cafeteria. I would, I would like to see like a conceptual plan, if you could get it to Steve with just some more details, because this was one of the items that finance recommended coming out, and I really, I want to see more, and like, I don't want us to just throw out a number that we put back in without understanding, if we just put half in, what you're not getting, or what you're getting.
Yeah, we have, we have very detailed plans, conceptual plans, drawings from an architect and so forth on the, the Narmack project.
I don't know what everyone else would like to see, but I'd like to see the plans. I think that it'd be good to post them for other people to see them too, so that they can rally around it. And then I would like to see what, I kind of get what Nathan Hale and Rowan and Marvin, what you're thinking of doing, but that other part with the replacement stuff, I'd like to understand that better.
Absolutely, we can do that.
All right.
So just to add, because I was going to ask you later on, but a breakdown of, you know, we have these cafeteria costs, which begs the question, you know, want versus need, and they, you know, gilded in gold or whatever, silver. The costs are high, right? So look at the costs, please, from what we've read here. So a breakdown of what the costs are to install these, I guess, commercial kitchens, right, that's where we're going, would be helpful to us when we deliberate, so the whole planning commission, and whatever we get as backup, whatever, will be posted with the rest of the backup stuff. So that, you know, you have until Wednesday, next Wednesday, to please get that in. So line item of cost will be important to us, you know, and I have no idea what, what a new kitchen or whatever it is, but, but the cost, you look at it, $750,000, say, whatever, costs are high, so.
Okay, well, I can give you, we'll put together a, a, the itemization of the $750,000 as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chandler Linton, I live at 10 Bucking Place in Norwalk, and I'm a senior health officer at Merrimack Elementary, and we call the proper lunchroom, particularly from the social-emotional aspect. I spent 15 years working as a teaching artist, specifically working on social-emotional skills with children. I'm sure we can all agree that we send our children to school, not only to learn math and English, but to develop important social skills and relationships. And I can say without hesitation that the environment at Merrimack Elementary does not provide that. Even as an adult, when I entered that room with a bunch of people, I can't stand it. I have to leave. I personally have a son who special needs, and he never eats lunch. His lunchbox always comes home without being touched, because it's an environment that's really, it's, it's, it's not conducive to social interaction, it's not conducive to eating, it's loud, it's chaotic, it takes 10, 15 minutes for the kids, for all the kids to collect their lunch, and they have 20 minutes for lunch. So I'm really just here to say, I believe that this is a need, it is not a want, and it's desperately needed at Narmack, and so I do hope to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, one other thing that I wanted to add was, since there seem to be, you guys talked about stress of the kids, you know, 20 minutes for lunch and whatever it is, I'm just, you don't even answer right now, but has it ever been looked at that maybe we need to extend the lunch? Is it half an hour? I mean, I don't know. I mean, whatever the reasons are, but we keep hearing, you know, we've got to put in kiosks, you know, the kids are stressed out because of the lunch time periods, you know? So just a thought, if you ever, has that been looked at?
Yeah, it's a little outside my area of expertise, I'm not sure. One of the principals wants to get up on that one right there.
I think too, for this request, whatever...
You have to speak.
Oh, God, I'm sorry.
Just put it in front of you.
Whatever else that you can provide, maybe from some teachers or principals, or reach out to some people to get some data of what the environment is there. I mean, I know we went through it at our own school, and I am a fan of this new model, but the prices have gone up substantially. So I think like, we kind, I would like to know from people that are in the existing model, what's not working with it, and why we're moving to this other model, with maybe some more detail for our meeting when we do that.
Yep.
Okay. To be able to, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jane Wilkins, I'm the principal at Narmack Elementary School. And first, I'll answer your question on the extended time of the lunchroom. It isn't necessarily an issue of time, because a lot of children aren't ready to finish, and then when they finish, it's downtime for them, and it becomes a behavioral nightmare trying to keep everybody contained for the rest of the 10 minutes. So it's more about the environment, either stimulating or not stimulating for the conversation, if I'm conducive to the conversations that this ends up talking about.
Hold on.
Yes?
So they have 20 minutes to eat lunch and have recess?
No, 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 it's a 40-minute lunch period. It's 40-minute lunch and recess.
40 minutes off the gap.
20-minute lunch, 20-minute recess. So in addition to the important issues raised by the members of the SGC, I think it's important you should know that we, ever since I've been at the school, I've been pushing Tom and every person I could to say, we need an addition, we need a cafeteria, we need a cafeteria. I previously worked at Marvin Elementary School, where my kids went through, I also was the site director there, a teacher there, and there was a separate cafeteria there, and I recognized the difference as soon as I got there, that the, you know, the deficit our kids were at in Narmack, not having that separate space. So what, obviously, the addition is very costly. So our SGC put our heads together to come up with a plan that would use our existing space to ease the cost on the city. So working in good faith, we wanted to, and knowing that there's extensive capital needs, obviously, by what's here tonight, that we wanted to propose a plan that would use our space and keep the cost as low as possible, so that we could have this for our kids. So we're asking that you recognize our good faith efforts and support our project of cafeteria, thanks for our kids, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Colin Rupp here, 16 West Rocks Road. I'm here as a parent of a proud Tracy Cup. My daughter's six and my son, 21 and a half, hoping to be a Tracy Cup in the near future. I don't have to create artwork like the kids before, but I love seeing it and hope my daughter can have one for her hearing in the future.
I just took my...
Fully support, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I fully support the addition of a new playground. I think, you know, seeing Tracy School in the news, and being a school that's on the rise with its national recognition, it's a school of character, and its statewide recognition as being a new magnet school, I think is great and very positive for the community living around the corner. I found out about a couple new things tonight, just being here because I was coming for the playground. I didn't realize that there was a TMP proposal for walkability in the area. I live too close to the school to be bused for my daughter, so I walk her to school every morning. The sidewalks are generally deficient in that area, and it is one of the more densely populated areas in Norwalk around in elementary schools, so anything that can be done to improve the walkability in that neighborhood will unquestionably provide options for parents and their, and their children to get to school, and that could help combat some of the traffic congestion that the school has experienced during pickup and drop-off, if people, you know, take five minutes to walk to the school and walk home, as opposed to 20 minutes to drive the car and get out of the traffic jam. I would also say that if a playground is how we help to educate the children's bodies with age-appropriate equipment, that we would also decorate the time with, with the piano tuning or refurbishment and/or purchase of new instruments. I can't think of a better way to, you know, spend my form of educational years than having the wonderful sounds of a piano that's in tune and, you know, very enriching to the mind and the spirit before I go to check out a new playground outside. Thank you very much, I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, Diane Moracella, 49 Taylor Avenue. Related to the Board of Ed, I'm just, I'm going to, I thank you for allowing us to send in our written documents, and with enough time, we really appreciate that. I'm just going to focus on about three of the line items. I just was upstairs at the Land Use and Building Management Committee of the Common Council, because on their agenda, they were talking about construction standards for buildings. They're going to hire a company to put together standards for any construction, including our school construction. I'm here tonight because I just returned from a, I'm part of a Connecticut Energy Network, which comprises people who are either on their town's energy task forces, sustainability groups, and includes people that are professionals. The conference I just returned from last Thursday was on net-zero energy schools. There was no one from the city, even though I sent to appropriate people that came, it was on a Saturday indeed, but it was an excellent discussion. And what I wanted to just throw out here is that any of the construction-related, and I know energy and gasoline, that's an operating budget item, but what I don't see here in this capital budget request is equipment like solar panels, possibly. You can have solar panels on the roof, you can have solar panels on a carport, like Fairfield. You can have solar panels ground-mounted in a field fenced off, which is less popular and maybe not appropriate for schools, but it does happen. What I've seen in not only are major renovations new, for several years I've been here... What I've seen in not only are major renovations new, for several years I've been here, I've also seen with our additions, and I'm seeing with the current plans for the new schools, and again, I think it's a terrific idea, I'm in favor of Cranberry being rebuilt. But what we have to do is have a baseline, a cross-border policy, where we take a look at schools that are net zero, which means for the audience and some of you, the amount of energy needed to function in the buildings, all of the energy needed, is made up by energy through efficiency, which I know that the city and the school system is starting to do with the boiler replacement, window replacement. But it's not enough, that you replace the energy used with energy that is created. And solar through leasing is what Newtown, Fairfield, and many other cities and towns do in our city. We're about ten years behind other school districts and town buildings. So I just wanted to impart that, and one other thing, and that is what I was very alarmed at, and I just haven't had, because we didn't have the backup. And I really appreciate Fran and the commission that you're gonna put all the backup online, because some of us really look into it, we wanna make comparisons, I appreciate that. But when I saw the underground or the tank replacement, fuel tank replacement, starting at one point two million dollars...
What, what section?
That's in, that is, fuel tank replacement number, it's hard, it's so tiny, the way...
We have it, we have it.
We have it, we have it, I have it, I have it.
I don't believe, because I've asked about this before, that these are all underground fuel tanks. I hope they're not. Many of them, like at West Rocks or in a building, we had that spill with the floor drain, and it cost tens if not hundred thousand dollars worth of spill cleanup. I'm just asking that we do preventive maintenance, we could have saved a lot of money by doing this gradually, and whoever decided to hold off on fuel tank replacement, some think they should be accountable, because today's cost for replacing, removing waste oil tanks, or I'm sorry, fuel tanks, is so much more now than it was twenty years ago. The above and underground fuel tank laws have been around since the eighties. There's no excuse for whoever was doing facilities management, and we should have accountability because that one point two five million just in this fiscal year and needed, could have been used on Cranberry School renovation and a lot of the other good things that people here would like. So thank you for your time, let's look into it.
Thank you.
Good evening, Lisa Anderson, Albert Cleveland. My adult children began our college schools many years ago, and the issues being talked about tonight are many of the same issues that parents spoke about twenty years ago, still with no resolutions, including the Silvermine parking lot. My son started at Silvermine before going to Columbus, and Cranberry, and Tracy School issues. Columbus is in desperate need for a new school to go. We have many expensive projects, school projects in need in this city that have been on the priorities list, and New Norwalk High is not one of them. With regard to the proposed New Norwalk High School, it is premature to bond millions of dollars for a new high school not yet approved by the Board of Ed, the council, or the state commissioners. They use it or lose it, arguing it, Senator Duff's has nothing to, there's nothing to back it up. We just heard about items not covered in the Columbus rebuild. Just imagine the additional costs in a two hundred and twenty-five million dollar high school rebuild. With so many unanswered questions, it's irresponsible to move the high school project forward before the project has been properly vetted. It's time to take care of the needs of the current schools. Tasked parents cannot afford to fund the needed improvements spoken about tonight and new high school that's never been identified as needed by the Board of Ed or the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a quick comment to the parent, not just to you, just to everyone. I've heard a lot of really amazing pleas tonight for safety, cafeterias, Cranberry. I've sat up here and I'm the zoning commission a long time, probably too long, and Cranberry School's been, you know, I was here with electrical, everything, and, you know, we have to make tough decisions with our recommendation, and I haven't really heard from any parents on why we should be investing in Norwalk High School, or, no one's talking about that. So if there's somebody here that is actually on the pro side, it would be interesting to hear that, because we only have so many dollars, and I feel like a lot of the pleas here have been pianos we need, cafeterias we need. I haven't heard anyone pro Norwalk High, so I think, somewhere down the road, I would like to kinda hear people's opinion, if there are any on that side, if that makes sense.
Looks like somebody wants to say something after.
Okay, that's good, after.
No, no, go ahead. No, no, get it, you have to get in line.
Hi, everyone, my name is Zina King, I live at Seven Nurse Record. I'm the proud parent of a kindergarten student at Silvermine Elementary School. My husband is here as well. I'm here to talk about two things that we desperately need at Silvermine. The first day I drove into the parking lot at Silvermine, it was so terrible that I thought, okay, let me see how I would describe this to someone, and I thought, it's like a game of musical chairs, there just aren't any chairs. But then I was like, no, that makes it seem too nice. Then I thought, okay, it's like you're at a concert, and you should leave early, you don't leave early, and then you're stuck in the parking lot, you can't move, it's a safety hazard. That is even still too nice.
Speak a little closer to that.
I would describe it as a situation where it's, I'm afraid for someone's life, for a child's life. There are children in very close proximity to buses, to cars, there is no parking, around the school there isn't, you can't, when you leave the campus, there's nowhere to park. On occasion, my mother, my mother-in-law will go for a three-year-old to pick up my kindergarten student, there's nowhere to park. They now leave our house about forty minutes early to circle the parking lot to get a spot, which is not ideal either. And as I said, it is just a safety hazard, I am afraid for someone's life in that parking situation. The second thing is about the playground. My daughter recently said to me, Mom, can I start bringing my toys to school? And I said, why, you cannot bring toys to school. She's like, there's nothing to do on the playground, it's not fun. And I totally understand, looking at the playground, it is not appealing, it is not, there's nothing about it that says to a child, hey, this is an important part of your life. I work in corporate America, we have a gym, which is nice, and it's a nice thing, people think, oh yeah, it's a perk. It is a perk, but for employers, what it is, is, hey, away when my employees need a break, they get to go, they get to work out, they're refreshed, they come back and they engage, they engage, and they can produce so much more, and it's the same philosophy. If we don't say to children, it's important for you to have fun, for you to go out and spend energy, and come back and even be even more productive, it just, it's a turn, and I don't think my daughter needs to bring toys to school to sit at her desk to play, that she should be outside, enjoying a beautiful playground, which I know you can produce. I don't envy anyone who has to call a shot in terms of what you spend money on, and as you said, there's so much that we can do, but I think those two items, it's like, it's not even an option, it's kind of mandatory. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Young, I'm at Four Christian Lane in Norwalk. I have four children, one at Norwalk High, one at West Rocks, and two at Cranberry. The child at Norwalk High has been through Cranberry. I'm here to read, I'm part of the SGC, inaugural year of the SGC, this is my fourth and final year on the SGC, still nothing has been done to Cranberry at all. So last year, we as an SGC put together a petition, we had close to five hundred people sign that, I'm here to represent the school and re-deputition to you. Dear Mayor, Members of the Common Council, we the undersigned a petitioning for your commitment in writing and an action to secure funding for a new Cranberry Elementary School. This remedy is long overdue, with planned and budgeted renovations having been promised and not executed multiple times over the years. I've been on the SGC for four years, everything, every time, every year has been punted. It is a critical failure for our children and residents of the Cranberry area who provide a major portion of city revenues. It is unacceptable for the city of Norwalk to provide a sixty-year-old obsolete school building that has been repaired but with little upgrades to its electrical and HVAC infrastructure, and possesses outdated entry points, windows, solid surfaces, flooring, and facility amenities, as well as failing outdoor overhang. We are no longer interested in waiting for city officials to take action or demanding immediate action and public announcement on your commitment to secure and put aside funds for a new building without further delay. We insist the new building, as committed to by the Ryland administration, be the capital budget for 2021, such that project will be filed with the state of Connecticut by June thirty, 2020. We look forward to your commitments to this community in writing as soon as possible, and a public announcement of your future plans to begin this project prior to the various impending deadlines that are approaching. So so far, since we did that, we met with Mayor Ryland, he got re-elected, there was a public announcement put on the school's website, or the Norwalk's website, and then we hear that it may be punted again. It's unacceptable. Yes, we had several parents here, and hearing from all elementary schools, that is our future, that's our generation. Please help my kids so at least one of them can experience having a cafeteria versus having to participate in a gym and a cap at the exact same time. You know, I plead for you. Look, if it takes more than three years, fine, then my daughter's out of the school, but it benefits the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's talking about pointing at school?
Good evening, my name is Nicole Daines, I live at Seven Ohio Avenue. I have come today to speak about the playground at Tracy Madden School to answer Ms. King's question about Norwalk High. I have the privilege of working at Norwalk High as a community partner with Norwalk High, I'm not employed by the city. The need there has, there is a need, you have children in the cafeteria because we don't have classes for them, we have overcrowded classes. There's not enough space to accommodate the influx that has come into the city as well as what is still going to come. So I know that the announcement was kind of a surprise, no one really knew it was coming, but there is a need. The school, the school that is also house their P-Tech, they don't have a bathroom. Why does a P-Tech have a bathroom? Because when they were figuring out where they were going to put them, the city, we ran out of money, and so we did feel it was important for someone to go to the bathroom. I have seen more than five times kids running across the school to find a bathroom that they can use. That is embarrassing, really, because we were poor planners, and they think that this sub-school would need a bathroom. So there is definitely a need for P-Tech to be able to have a space that is conducive to their growth and their charter. But I would have said something more eloquent, but I was not prepared to speak on that this evening.
So there's overcrowded classrooms at Norwalk? I have not heard that before.
Yeah, the children said that they're in the cafeteria, we don't have anywhere for them to come.
Are we over capacity at Norwalk High School?
I am not, I don't know, I cannot speak.
Tom?
That's for Tom, I don't want him to finish.
You're allowed to finish, go. I'm just, sorry, sorry, I'm sorry.
Tracy Madden School is not only a Lutheran school, it is also a school of character, a national school of character for social and emotional learning. Any given month, we have outside visitors from outside our district, across the nation, coming into Tracy Madden School to see the great work and effort that has been put in by staff, children, and parents. Tracy is the jewel of the city. We may be small, and we may, we may be small, but we have a large impact, and that has been shown through our test scores. On other one occasion, myself and another parent who has been, have walked through the field as well as the playground before we've had special guests, and picked up and made sure that there were not any sightable eyesores. I am privileged to say that thirty years ago, I too was a Tracy Cub, but the same playground that I ran across twenty-plus years ago, my now second grader runs across. The same bridge I got my foot stuck in in second grade, he has gotten his foot stuck in. The same slide that I have had the privilege of fun to slide down, unfortunately, he gets stuck at the top and no longer is able to slide down. There is tons of data that reports that a healthy play system is good for digestive system, fine motor skills, the general core of being a child, and to fight obesity, which are all things that we have seen in data in our city. But more to the point of it, what child should not play? We should not be a city that wants to take away green spaces, beautiful places, places of imagination, places of social development, places where children are allowed to be children. This item has been to, through the process before, and for whatever reason, Tracy always gets almost there, but not across the finish line. I am very disheartened to hear about many of the other situations in many other schools, but I have to say that Tracy is well overdue for an update for the playground. As a member of the school governance council and the PTA, I have worked with other parents and have saw other parents start initiatives to partner with corporate sponsors to do things such as getting our school painted, to increase locals throughout the building, as well as to raise money to enhance our outside space. Currently, we are soliciting corporate funds to help us build a mural and other things that will beautify our space, because it's not a happy place, and we all, I think, can agree that we would like all of our children to be in happy places. Additionally, you know, our principal and our site director was here, you saw our beautiful Cubs, but at some point in time, we have to not keep putting Tracy in the back burner. We have been able to do great things with little, and it is time for us to be cared about, to be looked at, and to be sought about. And a playground is just something that, we shouldn't really have to think about it, I know it has a fiscal number to it, but it's something that is just part of being a kid. I still have fond memories of running across that playground, that field, but as a parent, twenty years, thirty years later, knowing that my child has fallen, gotten large gashes, bust the lift on a playground, that is just not safe, it's not what the jewel of the city should be looking for.
Can you go say your name again?
Nicole here, Seven Ohio Avenue.
How you spelled, your last name?
A-Y-E-R-S.
Okay, thank you. Tom, if you can address a couple of things.
Just address the question about overcrowding at Norwalk High School. To my understanding, that the overcrowding was related to the unexpected and large increase in enrollment that the district experienced this year. Our enrollment increased over what we had budgeted and anticipated by about three hundred additional students, and many of those students were, or are at the high school level, and many of those students are English language learners. You may have read about this in the paper, because the district requested and ultimately received a special appropriation from the city of a million dollars plus four hundred thousand dollars that went to the city social services department to provide additional social work services. And that special appropriation was to fund additional positions. We did in fact, as I understand it, have students who were in the cafeteria because classes were full, there were no additional classes to put them in, not because there wasn't physical space in the building, but because there was not money available to hire the teachers to open those classes. And so that was what the special appropriation request was about, was to address that really, you know, very serious situation. Obviously, we can't tolerate a situation where we have students sitting in cafeteria, unable to be, to, you know, be educated because we don't have a teacher there to teach them.
So it's not because there's, the facility isn't big enough, it's because of the teachers?
That's my understanding. Now, you know, I'm, you know, several steps removed from the school, and certainly, someone from the school administration advised us otherwise, you know, maybe, maybe there's an issue in terms of capacity of the building that I'm not aware of, but I think the major issue, as I understand it, was related to the fact that there was this unexpected and large increase in enrollment, and we needed to open additional classes to accommodate those students.
Would you know, for Tom, you're... Would you know, for Tom, you're right, I got one more. So Steve, this, this line item was actually not in our meeting last week on Tuesday and Wednesday, there was no dollar amount there. So I think that we should get some of this backup material here, because...
It wasn't there from the Board of Ed.
It wasn't there from the Board of Ed.
It's, it's there from the director's recommendation, okay? It has nothing to do with the Board of Ed.
Right, it has nothing, right, but I think all these kind of comments, we probably need some backup material, so that when we meet again, we'll be able to talk about it?
Steve, give it to me, I'll get it to you.
Okay.
You know, at this point, I just saw the finance director's recommendations today. I haven't had a chance to speak with him concerning those recommendations. The sheet that I saw is showing a new project in it for Norwalk High School that lists a, it actually lists a department request, and that I do not believe is an accurate presentation, because our board did not make such a request. So I think it needs to at least be modified to show that our Board of Education has not made that request. My understanding of the city charter is that the, the mayor does in fact have the authority under the charter to add new projects to the capital budget, and I was under the impression that if there was going to be a new project added for Norwalk High School, it would come at the time that the mayor considers the capital budget, which is in March. The charter then does go on to say that if the mayor adds any new projects, it is required to come back to the planning commission for a recommendation on any such project that is added, but I'm not aware that it, that the charter provides for the finance director to add projects.
Do you know, for Tom, your head, what the capacity is for the high school and what the current enrollment is, and if you don't know it, can you get us those numbers?
Yeah, I do not know it off the top of my head, but we can, we can get that information.
Great, thank you. Okay, so just to make a comment, that gentleman in the gray, going to be the last one on the Board of Ed, you know, we've been here, we started at seven, so, and I've seen people add in, so we have to get on to the other departments as well, okay?
You asked for more questions?
That was you. I'm cutting it off with the gentleman, we have to, we can't go on all night on the other departments to possible. You can submit the written, if anybody has got any written stuff, until next one thing, okay?
Where do you submit it?
To Steve Clapton.
Okay.
Okay, next, yeah.
Good evening, my name is Adriana Hansen, and I live at 515 West Avenue. I have a comment and a question. My comment is, I am a US citizen, I was born in Colombia, so this is the first time that I'm able to speak in public here, and so I'm very glad to be able to let you know. I am very grateful for the opportunity to be here in favor of the new Tracy playground. My son has actually fallen on that playground, so I'm very, very relieved to hear that it is a priority for the Parks and Recreation Department in the capital budget request. As it is, kids only get a very limited amount of time of outdoor play, and they sometimes they don't even get any time outside, so when they are able to play outside, it would be ideal for them to have a safe environment that fosters their development. Assuming that this is approved, and given that Parks and Recreation spokesperson said that this playground for Tracy is a priority, my question is, when would this update take place after the funds are available in July?
Tom, you want to answer that one?
I'm sorry, but when would the...
Tracy Playground at 90...
Yeah, that, that project is a Parks and Recreation project, so I think somebody from Parks...
Once the money is available, when the money is available...
Sorry, you're gonna have to speak into the mic, sorry. Like everybody else, just so everybody's back can hear you.
So once the money is available, come July 1st, beginning of the fiscal year, we will go out to bid, and then the construction will start probably in the fall, no later than spring of next year.
For those who don't know who that is, that's our new director of Parks and Recs. Welcome, Nick.
My name is Drieger Casselli, 109 Adrian Street. I'm currently a student at Norwalk High, and every day, it's very hard to get into the wifi, because some, because some of the walls just don't allow cell service, they don't allow wifi, so it's very hard to be able to get our work done in a timely fashion within that time of giving class. Another issue that happens is that whenever it rains, the tiles always fall onto the ground, and it just leaves a whole big hole, hole in the wall and the ceiling, and that can be like an issue, cause someone already hit with it, and just you have a very big situation. It happened in one of my classes, a tile fell, and it wasn't, the hole wasn't fixed for like three weeks, and the teacher had a, had like its little tin underneath to catch all the water that was leaking through, and that's just not a good thing. Another issue is like the classes too, the classes are very overcrowded. There are some classes that I have, that I have a hard time just being able to move around, and we're like, it's just really crowded. Thank you for your advice.
Thank you.
Is building management taking note of the ceilings, the tiles falling down? Hope there's somebody here, Tom is taking notes, right?
I'm taking notes.
Brian Meek, 11 Cranberry Woods Road. Thank you, Commissioners. I am here to support, in part, the finance director's recommendation to you, namely to build Cranberry School. Cranberry is the least invested section of Norwalk. Few of us have garbage, sewer, trash, we have the slowest police response times in the city, that's just by proximity, no fault of the police department. We have a beautiful Cranberry Park that is open to the public at large everywhere. We need a new school. I think you've heard all the comments, I won't go on too much about that. We desperately need a new school. This is an amazing investment to put into the city of Norwalk that will uplift this whole section of town. That said, I, I would love to see a new Norwalk High. To answer Commissioner Peniston's question earlier, Norwalk High was originally built for 2,000 students, sans the science wing that we paid 20 million plus for within the last 20 years, we're still paying debt on this. We just put millions into the pool, culinary center, all sorts of money. Coincidentally, the state legislature opened their session today, there is no bill on the books to get reimbursement for Norwalk High. This thing's been talked about for eight months, and we don't even have a bill guaranteeing Norwalk money. They're asking Norwalk to put up all this money for something that maybe could happen? I'd love to see it happen, but let's get some more skin in the game from the state before we go over the cliff and throw out all these other projects that we desperately need done. I'm not going to go through this whole list of everything that was cut from the finance director's list, but these are, these are valuable projects that need to be done. I would say, first off, let's start with the air quality at Brian McMahon High School, $200,000. How did that get cut? We've been talking about this for years, there's mold in hallways, a bunch of us have been up there and witnessed this firsthand, this is $200,000, this isn't even a rounding error, let's get it done. Ponies furniture for a million, really, we're gonna build a new school? We're gonna have kids sit on carpet? We're not gonna have desks for them? How did that get out of the equation? The other item is a little more expensive, but cafeterias, and people have talked about this, but these are low-cost investment, high-quality improvements to a school that go a long way. If you don't believe it, go look at Tracy right now, you wouldn't believe, go into Tracy School, you would not believe the improvement from that little investment in the cafeteria, or waiting, all right? So there was an $8 million ask over five years for cafeterias, but I think $4 million need to go in right away. I won't list off the schools, but they're the smaller ones. They're $500,000 for Brookside, up to $750,000 for Nathan Hale and in between. Those things need to get done. These are low-cost investments, high-quality return, that can really give us bang for our buck. So, and I'm looking through the rest of my notes, I think that's it, but thank you for your consideration, please build Cranberry School, thank you.
I'd like to just say one thing, so you can walk up here, but someone, a gentleman up there mentioned that he had heard that Cranberry might be punted again. There is no indication, at least in this group, that that's happened, it's, it's in the finance director's recommendation for this year, so I'm not sure where you heard it, it might be a rumor, but we have not heard that Cranberry is going to be punted from any source in the city, so...
You have to approve this, though.
You have to...
Yeah, yes.
No, I know, I'm not speaking for us, except I'm just saying that we haven't heard that
it's been, going to be punted from any, from any indication.
Hi, my name is Mary Smith, I live at 9 Hillwood Place in Norwalk, and I'm part of the wonderful Silvermine Community, and sorry, I know the lines have kind of blurred between Board of Ed and Parks and Rec, but since Tracy was up here for the playground, we wanted to make sure that we're represented well for our playground needs. So our playground was built well over 24 years ago, and I'm part of the SGC, and I'm vice president of the PTA, and our wonderful Silvermine School did a wonderful thing that hopefully you've heard about, our walkathon, and our kids worked really hard, was raising lots of money, we got excited because they were doing it to help put in a new little part of the playground. Well, I'm a notes to us, when we started to talk to wonderful Parks and Rec and had our supplier of Norwalk come and do it, we can't add on to it, it is not up to code, we cannot touch legally our playground. Our kids worked really hard to get wonderful things for this playground, and they can't do it unless Norwalk does the rest. I mean, it gives us the starting of a wonderful playground, which I know Parks and Rec has requested, so I hope that stands, because then our kids' hard work at the walkathon and safety and many other things, beautification, safety, all the things that I'm sure you know about come into play, but mainly just, they did lots of work, and they deserve it to be paid off, and they deserve it to be safe, and I think that's it. I know some of the kids want to say why it's important to them.
How much money did the kids raise?
Part of us wants to hold that close to the chest, because we don't want Norwalk to go back and what they're gonna do, but thank them very much.
For holding back, I just was asking, because...
No, the kids raised over $45,000.
Congratulations.
So I can make a comment, though, one thing, you've seen this in the past, so I urge every school, the PTAs, all the governing council, to please communicate with the city. We've seen many projects raise money, and then there are complications because of what you just alluded to as well. So it's all good, coordinate, raise, raise funds, get a corporate sponsor, whatever they are, but please, at the very beginning, as we've seen all kinds of issues, please get together with Parks and Recs or whoever partner it is, and start right at the beginning.
And I'll give a shout out to Parks and Rec, because they can attest, we talked to them before walkathon even started, telling them what we wanted to do, making sure the guy came out to see everything in a set, so we definitely tried to follow those steps.
Okay, good job.
Hello, my name is Samantha Cruz, and I live on 47 Main Avenue, and I'm a third grader for Silvermine School. I really like my school, because it's a very kind of place, everybody's there, all the teachers, students, and the PTA members, and staff members. I really do want to have some money for the playground and for our driveway, because it's very unsafe. In the morning, it's chaotic in the driveway with all the buses and everybody going off, if you're not, just there's no space to go, and it's very narrow, the street at the console, and the playground, it's very unsafe too, because it's very old. Our, where did you grow once? It did, it was very old. I really hope to connect the money to make it, and I do remember one time I grew up in our parents' game to paint the driveway, to make it safe, but we still need that money, we still deserve it, could be paid off, it worked, we worked a lot for it, harder than anything we've done, we should, it really should be out.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Lucas Gero, I live on 17 Pedon Road, Norwalk, Connecticut, and I'm a fifth grader for Silvermine School. I have two brothers, one at second grade, and my other school joined Silvermine in two years. My school is very special because it's the only dual language school in Norwalk. Everyone there is coming, teachers, staff, principal, families, and students. It's like my second home and family. I want to ask you to build two things, one, a new playground for our school, and two, please fix the driveway for our school. My request is not for me, it is, it is for my little brother, because they will benefit for these changes. Thank you, and go Silvermine, have a good time.
My name is Liz Paul McQuaid, and I live on 5 Main Street, now in Norwalk, Connecticut. I used to go to Silvermine, and finding out that the playground is 25 years old is very surprising, and finding out, and I, when I found out that the bridge broke, that couldn't have happened during the school year, that couldn't have happened to a student, and that couldn't have made the school get a lot of backlash for it. It's such a good school, and it deserves a new playground, it deserves much more than what we are getting, and we are raising all this money, and then all the students, we're so happy to, what we planned, we expect that Norwalk will help us with, and we expect that we will, we will eventually get this, and I have two brothers there, and the, the school playground right now is a mess. It has a wood swing, and I have a team on it, but I saw that one there, and I didn't even know what it was.
Okay, thank you.
And about the driveway, we have to, we have two guards, two, uh, two guards to make the car stop for walking three feet, that is how bad the driveway condition is. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Daniel Cruz. My name is Daniel Cruz, I live on 47 Main Avenue, I'm a former student of Silvermine School, and when I used to go to recess, it was never really fun to go to the playground, the playground wasn't that new, there wasn't really much to do, and I think that it'd be really nice if my younger sister, my younger cousins, get a new playground so they can have more fun in recess. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate so much that you let our students and teachers who have an early morning speak to us, I'm really grateful to you for that.
They can use this tomorrow for not doing homework and stuff, okay?
We can declare a planning commission appearing at National City Holiday. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you regarding our capital budget, we're very grateful to hear the commitment...
Just your name and...
Sorry, Barbara Meyer Mitchell, 10 Allen Road.
Thanks.
And I'm also chair of the Finance Committee of the Board of Education. On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to discuss the need for funding some crucial pieces of the capital request that have not been recommended by the Director of Finance. Our instructional technology and curriculum textbooks and materials are the core business that we do in our schools, it's the way we deliver learning. Our current English language arts curriculum is going out of print, and we need to supply these new materials to our classrooms. Likewise, so much of our work is done on Chromebooks, and we're proud of our one-to-one technology. By completely eliminating our technology request, the city would essentially be crippling our ability to educate our students for 21 centuries left. Some of these requests are really about equity in our schools. So Narimac Almondry, you've heard, has the dreaded cafeteria, where space is shared between gym, cafeteria, and state. The impact, as you heard, is that the school cannot use the gym for indoor research, which is a third of the year due to weather conditions, and this has an impact on learning, because without gross motor play, students have more difficulty focusing, have increased behavioral issues, and a worse academic outcome. State statute requires 20 minutes of gross motor play in grades K through six. State statute requires 20 minutes of gross motor play in grades K through six, but that is unavailable to schools that cannot divide their gym to accommodate recess in your recess days. Narromack, as you've heard, has a postage stamp of a kitchen in which no food can actually be prepared from scratch. Cranberry had the same issue, but they're now getting a new school to address the problem. They were promised a cafeteria for 12 years, and then that was bumped, and now they're getting a new school, which is great. And that actually meets our goal of trying to create two new cafeterias along the designs. So we understand that perhaps a new school needs to wait. I won't bother to reiterate what Silvermine articulated so beautifully, but I think that's an equity issue, too. Now we have to talk about the less sexy things that no one in this room is going to talk about but me. We're grateful for the recognition of the legal necessity of replacing the oil tanks, the air conditioning, so that we can stay open on hot days, and the asbestos abatement. These are incredibly important. However, we're dismayed by the choice to defer the $200,000 for security upgrades, which were requested to increase security at our high schools by securing the larger public spaces, the gym, the library, the cafeteria, in the event of a situation where there's a threat to the building. We know from Columbine and other things, other events, that that's where a shooter goes, because they're looking for a large group. This would allow us to instantly lock that down. The $215,000 budgeted for repairs was also zeroed out in the recommended budget, which is really short sighted. Norwalk Public Schools is finally coming out of an era of low maintenance to our buildings. If we don't repair our buildings, we will find ourselves with an even larger capital expenditure down the line. We have some money in our operating budget and some in the capital budget. The first thing I did when I became the financier was ask for an itemization of how that was used, and wanted to be sure that we're using it all and we're using it well. And I'm here to tell you that I believe we are. I wouldn't say that if I didn't believe it. Similarly, the choice to completely deny the purchase of new cannons, not just deferred, but denied all the way out through the plan, is regrettable. I invite you to tour our schools and see the status of these instruments and the other issues. I'd be happy to host you. The deferment of bonus reg steam academy furniture is also disappointing. Why would you fully renovate a building and not equip it to the same standard? Please reconsider these choices, which will have a direct impact on our school communities. We understand this is a large request, but Norwalk is catching up from a lack of investment in our schools. We all supported the new police station, the new fire station, those were really great goals, but now we need to do the same for our schools. We are grateful for the vision of the mayor, the Planning Commission, and the common council, that you understand that NPS drives our property values and therefore our brand list. Our community deserves and can afford to be proud of the facilities in our city. Please take another look and see if we can find a way to afford these important projects while maintaining our AAA bond rating. I note that the interest rates projected in Mr. Dashowitz's projection in the out years are higher than currently, and I'm curious to know what data he based that upon, because it's possible that we could afford more if we took interest rates into account. I would also like to note, not that I'm complaining as a resident, that Norwalk has the lowest urban mil rate at 21 to 23 in the state. Our mil rate is actually lower than Wilton, Fairfield, Weston, Easton, Stanford, and Danbury. Norwalk needs to reflect on what kind of community we want to be. What kind of service do we want to provide our residents, and how do we want to improve quality of life here? I believe that by investing in our schools, our sidewalks, our parks, and our sportsfields, that we'll maintain a healthy community and retain residents for years to come. Thank you.
Go one more, August.
My name is Stell Consalati.
You can bring that up if you can.
My name is Stell Consalati. I live at 17 Pine Street, and I'm currently a junior Norwalk High School. On behalf of the track and cross-country teams, I would like to speak to you about the possibility of refurbishing the Norwalk High Track. The track is used on a daily basis, and over the past few years, it's been showing to ache, as the surface has worn down greatly, and there are various divots and bubbles that reduce its quality. In addition, these are safety hazards to those who use the track, and there are far too many of them to just patch them up. Therefore, a complete renovation is necessary to ensure that the track is kept in good condition, not just for myself and my teammates, but for other Norwalk residents who utilize the track as well. To continue hosting meetings and other events, the Planning Commission and Board of Education should seriously consider the renovation of the track, as it would benefit not only Norwalk High and its boys' teams, but the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that ends the... Any comments, questions on the Board of Ed? So we're going to thank you all for coming, for all the work, and the kids. Go home, go to bed. So thank you, it was a brilliant group coming in. Thank you. All right, next is the Fire Department. Is anybody here to speak to the Fire Department?
I think there's only one person. So let the chief go home.
Sorry, Chief Gino, I didn't know you were going to be... Sorry about that. I would have just learned about...
He learned a lot.
He did. I'm glad.
He learned that, like, he's got to go check some of these schools out.
Right. Anyway, Daniel Arcella, 124... Daniel Arcella, 49, Kailua. I'm here tonight to ask that this commission approve all the... Oh, excuse me a second, there's too much talking over there. Excuse us, do it in the hallway. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm here tonight, again, to request that this commission support every line item. Very recently, I sat in on the initial review for the fire department. They have a dangerous job, and I think this year on capital budget, they are doing a terrific job. The only line item that I decided I needed to speak out on is the vehicle replacement. Now, Gino wasn't the chief when, over the years, I have requested that they look, and Chris Smith is here, I think he heard me, discussing the issue of using electric vehicles. Hybrids are okay, but electric vehicles, if you look at the current rebates and also the fact that we wouldn't be buying the fuel, it accumulates, if we could have an across-the-board city policy for all fleet replacement, for EV, for electric vehicles. And I know some of you did ask them, why aren't you requesting it for the fleet that you want replaced? They gave an answer, well, we know that other towns are looking into it, we're going to wait at least another year. But the thing is, I brought this up for years, and this isn't a new technology anymore. There are rebates available, and I'd like us to take advantage of them, in all due respect to the fire department. We have to start somewhere with our departments, and I've said the same with the police department. I decided I'd just focus on the fire department, because I wanted you to fund all the other items. I'd actually ask you to ask them to go back to the drawing board on the fleet replacement item and prove why they cannot use electric vehicles. Thank you for your time.
Any... No comments, or is nothing...
We did, before your last week, we did, I'll speak before anyone, there were articles in trade magazines about the pitfalls of electric vehicles, and one of the big things, the cost for our mechanics to upgrade and prepare for it, obviously, if the city might fleet wide or more vehicles, it'll lower the cost and be able to possibly pool resources for that. There were a few articles, I'm going to give you the links for them, one I was referring to last week, I can't locate, but I did find a few other ones, I will get them to you this week. We have looked at it, and right now, it's more costly for us to upgrade unless it's more of a citywide issue with everybody.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting.
Okay, next, we have the Fire Department. All right, we're going to go to... Now we're going to go to Parks and Recs. Okay, so who's here, let me just say, who's here from Parks and Recs? No, no, from the...
Nick and Ken, right?
Department heads, if you can, please move up front here.
Hi, I'm Dave Davidson, 16 Metmolyne Road, and until recently, I was on that side of the table. I'm here to speak for Parks and Rec and for Public Works, our infrastructure, which historically, the last several years, we've been sacrificing to fund the Board of Education programs, which have exploded from the time they were originally proposed and approved. I noticed the Finance Director has made a 65% cut in the recreation and park, and a...
David, that thing can go down if you want, if it's more comfortable to you.
A 65% cut in the recommendation for recreation and parks, and a 30% cut in the engineering or the infrastructure of our city. I honestly believe that you're in a very difficult situation, trying to fund the requirements of the city. You've just completed a POCD that looks for the improvement of not only the Board of Education, but our infrastructure and our recreation and parks, and you're going to have a difficult time finding the funds for that. And I'm glad I'm on this side of the table and not on that side of the table now. But I would urge you to start balancing the books between infrastructure, recreation and parks, and the education, because the education has exploded from the amount that it was originally proposed for. And you, and I was not in favor of the expansion, voted against it frequently, but I recognize the needs, and I'm not in any way challenging what you heard tonight from the Board of Education, the people who are representing the Board and not the Board of Ed, and the people of the city, and what they want. But you have to balance the books. You have to recognize infrastructure and recreation and park needs with the same support that you've given to the Board of Ed in the past, and I would urge you to do those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
There's the lines over there.
I live on 206 Forest Avenue, and I'd love to have those Silvermine kids up here instead of me right now. We did a wonderful job. I promised a little bit screws on a bunch of soccer balls for the playground, so I'll give them a playground later. But in interest of time, looking to consolidate, although we had a lot of people that have to go home because of trouble today. And I have Josh, who should be here. He is from CJSA, the governing body of state for soccer, and he and I will just kind of combine here a little bit to try and streamline it a bit. So we're asking for your vote to support putting lights, concessions, and bathrooms when the project breaks ground for the turfing of the fields at West Rocks Middle School. As president of youth soccer for over five years, I'm aware the current field inventory falls significantly short of the demand in our town. The growth of youth sports has accelerated dramatically in the last 20 years. Enhancing the facilities at West Rocks, and bathrooms, concessions, and lights will create more useful space for all youth sports and all the teams in our community. This will have a positive ripple effect, which will benefit NJSA for all the field hockey, cross, baseball, softball, flag football, and many other teams out there. I know with so many kids in our program, we put a shaming on field accessibility throughout the city. Our season overlooks many of the aforementioned sports, because soccer's played all year round, heavily from August to November, and then made from May to June. Building the multi-use field with extended hours will create more inventory for the city, benefiting all teams to train out of space. The impact of the school start time initiative will have reverberating effects. School sports will use the fields longer, thus reducing the available field time that we have to all organizations. We will need to practice using lights more often, or our athletes will fall behind other towns. If our sports programs falter, other towns will become more attractive to buy homes in our areas. We can also attract higher quality coaching with better and more flexible schedules. Building a field with concessions and bathrooms will also put extra revenue into the city. Soccer, lacrosse, field hockey can do fundraising tournaments, jamborees, you could host playoffs. Our state organizations have a budget to reach out to less fortunate children, or empower women, can come to Norwalk and run special one-off events, bring people into this amazing city. The state of our facilities creates a better community with affordable rec and travel soccer programs, top soccer for children with special needs, increases desirability to live in Norwalk, which improves the home values for everyone in the city. Apparently speaking, Norwalk is still underserved compared to our surrounding towns. We took amazing steps with the addition of Nathan Hale, Antic Fry Field, which equally is huge. Baseball, soccer, cross, field hockey, rugby, and I'm sure other sports have benefited from these two additions. The extra inventory with a longer hours availability provided by the lights will allow us to do a better job of working together to help each other out on the field and field times and schedules. A few years after Nathan Hale Complex opened up, three of our four high school varsity soccer teams made the CAC and FCAC tournament. Think about that. This is totally amazing. Certain teams have not made that tournament in 15 years. It's a bottoms-up approach. That's how you get there. It's simple. The young women and men of Norwalk, I had more touches, because we had turf under the lights, which meant that they received more practice every season, and excellence is cumulative. We just have to keep going. We want all teams to win some of these tournaments. Norwalk is a growing population, we need playing field real estate to service the families in this community, so we won't leave, so they won't leave, to go to towns such as Fairfield, Greenwich, Westport, and Settle. To close at this point, and just once again, ask you for your vote, from lights, concessions, bathrooms, turf fields, we did a turf field project at West Rocks. The Soccer Federation states, we have to bring the game to the kids. A sports facility at West Rocks does that for everyone in Norwalk. I also have a note here from Bob Pecking, who is at Fort Appleway in Redding, Connecticut. He is a CJSA officer of Southwest District, founder of the Stanford Youth Sports Coalition, and director of the Stanford Youth Soccer League. They, I'm going to paraphrase it, and I'll provide you the details here in an email. In 2014, they put turf fields in place. What they didn't do is they didn't put concessions, they didn't put lights, and that really is weight on them. Because they did not fund, fortunately, they did not fund for lights, concessions, or bathrooms, which means our state-of-the-art facilities are limited, and we have the same public porta potties and containers on the field. We cannot attract big-money making tournaments for professional teams, which would create enthusiasm for our players. They go to other venues. Norwalk would be a replication of Stanford's estate if you don't like, if you don't fund the lights, concessions, and bathrooms for a West Rock facility. With that, I'd like to have Josh make his quick statement.
Good evening. I'll be very quick. To echo what Bob has said here, it's very, very, very important that we continue to do our best to give access to the game to our kids. We do an okay job at the state level, we need to do more in getting down into this neck of the woods, if you want to call it that. Right now, all of our ID programming is up in Farmington, Connecticut, okay, with a very small one being in Trombone, Connecticut. Norwalk being in the center of the Fairfield County would be an ideal spot to give access to this game, to your kids, so that they aren't missing the vote. And I would probably be comfortable saying that that's probably similar across other sports as well. U.S. Soccer and United States Youth Soccer have many programs, whether it's the ODP program, which is Olympic development, whether it's top soccer for student athletes with disabilities, whether it be female-specific coaching education, or female-specific playing opportunities, whether it be ID tournaments and so forth. But to not go forward and complete this project and provide the amenities needed when those RFPs come out, I think is a mistake, and I would encourage you to do your best to take it to completion. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sidney Oliver. I live at 5th and Main. And I'm a junior at Bryan McMahon High School. I'm also co-founder of the Student Athletic Advisory Board at our school in accordance with the CIA's C-Classic School Student Athletic Advisory Board. I understand there are a lot of reasons that people are here tonight to discuss with you, but I'm here to discuss with you the importance of renovations of both the softball field and the tennis courts at our school. As a student leader at our school, I'm representative of many of the student athletes. And even though I play soccer at Bryan McMahon, these renovations will directly affect all athletes. Starting this year, as many of you know, we are changing to a later start time. While this may be productive for general students' sleep schedule, it will be much harder on student athletes as it is already very difficult to fit insufficient's practice times for boys and girls to freshman JV and varsity sports. Therefore, it is extremely important that these renovations are made, as it will help with scheduling every sport and help all teams succeed. Speaking of success, our softball players are really out on softball field as it is a disaster. Instead, they are constantly rescheduling games and practicing in the gym, which is insufficient. There's a clear correlation between practice facilities and success rate, as the baseball team has lost significantly more games since the divination of Bryan McMahon. We also desperately need to renovate the tennis courts. There are huge cracks in the court, which affect the players' game and practice and can cause major injuries. Last but not least, playing in high school sports provides amazing benefits to students, athletes, teammates, and classmates, make lasting friendships, live healthier lives, and contribute to the community. We want as many students as possible to participate in high school sports on the state playable services. Bryan McMahon is an amazing school. We need to continue to upgrade our facilities. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Megan Hopps. I live at 1st and Palace for Avenue. I don't envy the spot here, as I listen to everyone speak tonight. I've been up here asking for the same things from my elementary school and my middle school. Tonight, Nick Gomtow is a parent of an athlete, two athletes. I have a swimmer, which doesn't affect field activities, but I have a baseball player slash soccer player. And we've been around traveling to kids' events with all three of my kids' sports. We go to other towns where there's amazing facilities, where they can have tournaments and fundraisers. And when you go to, say, a tournament in Glass River, you get an email in January, and if you don't book your hotel when you get that email, you're out of luck, and you're driving back and work at Glass River all weekend. When you're there for the weekend, every restaurant is full of soccer players and families and parents and siblings from all around the town. So if you make the improvements in West Rocks and focus on getting those to be really top-class facilities, bringing in the bathrooms, bringing in concessions, more, there'll be a lot more opportunity for Norwalk to host events that will draw people to our awesome city. It will bring more business to the hotels, to the restaurants. It'll get us a really nice image in the state like towns like Glass River and Bethel and other towns have because they made that investment. So as you look at where you're putting your Parks and Rec money, I know there are a lot of places in town that need some extra help, but I think looking ahead to see what can that investment bring you in the big picture will be really something to pay attention to, and more investment in West Rocks will do that. Thank you.
I'd like to ask you a quick question. Thanks for your words. Have you ever seen a corporate name on any of these other facilities you've seen, like a co-branding or the name of a bank?
That's a great point, because I don't be a fan of public, private-
We've been discussing it, but it hasn't happened yet.
But it's definitely something that needs to, I think there's an opportunity for. When you go to, so Bethel, you go to a baseball tournament in Bethel where there are coliques. And all along the back, you do see big banners that say, you know, the local automobile dealership or wherever it may be. So yes, there's definitely opportunities to build some relationships there, advertising and all that. The infrastructure is there. They've got beautiful concessions, and they've got bathrooms that are not porta-potties, good parking, and great places to bring your kids to play.
Thank you very much. Good to know from people who've actually gone to all these places. Take care from Ben.
I'll be somewhere at 5 o'clock on Saturday morning, so.
Hi, good evening. I'm William Pierce. I'm a 15-year teacher at Bryan McMahon and 12-year coach for the tennis program. I'm representing both the boys and girls teams. Last year, we had a little bit of work, hats work done on the courts. By the time the season started, it washed away. So we came back to starting the season with two-inch fractures, and also runoff, which we call the cut, where a lot of water comes down, which used to be on the driveway that would exit the building. Now we have a lot of runoff that pretty much covers and creates a desert if we have a rainstorm. So prior to matches on weekends, if we have to forfeit or push over for a rainout, I'm usually out there an hour prior to with a broom or a leaf blower trying to get the courts sufficient for matches. With that, I have coaches that come in, and it's pretty much a safe, bein' healthy health for the students, players, that they come up and they don't have to worry about issues. I mean, it's a non-contact sport. They should feel comfortable playing tennis. It's a lifelong sport. The issues of sliding, if you ever tried to actually put some light gravel down on a tennis court and actually try to stop yourself, we've had players slip, fall. Luckily, it's just been brushed off. There are those issues of catching a foot or twisting an ankle with the fractures and the actual runoff from certain areas, which does add, like usual court match, takes about 45 minutes to an hour and a half. So if we take seven matches and we don't use two of the courts, we're there somewhere between four to six fifteens in a normal match. But sometimes if we're not using two courts, we're there somewhere close to nine o'clock. So we're taking away from the students' education and the time of the players and other coaches. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Ross, first-year athlete at Bryan McMahon High School. I grew up in Norwalk. I graduated at Bryan McMahon High School. My parents graduated at Bryan McMahon High School. My great-grandmother used to live over by Mr. Frosty's, and she had nine kids. She had seven boys and two girls, and there was no parks for them to play in. So what she did, she went over to the town don, and she started making room for fields for her kids to play. Now, that field is currently in Evans Park. Now, the interesting thing about my grandmother's family, my grandfather's family, sorry, they played as a group as a softball team, co-ed. So we're talking like 1930s, and two of my great-aunts were fantastic softball players. The men actually banned the team from competing against them because my great-aunt was such a great pitcher, she was striking all the guys out. Now, where am I going with this? I was a big baseball player growing up, coached baseball team for a number of years at Bryan McMahon Baseball. And the facility that both Bryan McMahon and Nathan Hale are state-of-the-art has transformed our programs. But side by side, I saw day after day that the softball field was lacking big time. And those girls did not have the same opportunities that any of our guys. And that's sad, really sad. I'm sure my, you know, great-aunts would be very unhappy seeing what the boys have, what the girls don't. Obviously, this brings up title line issues because of the fact that the girls don't have the same opportunities when games are getting canceled or raided out, they're subjected to being in the gym. Now, as Sidney was saying so eloquently there, the facilities that we do have do make our programs much better, both at Bryan McMahon and Norwalk High. One of the reasons why I'm really for this project, though, in the line item says softball field, but it should really be seen as a multipurpose field. All our fields are all for multipurpose. Castle Grand Field was used for football, soccer, field hockey in the fall. We use Pride Field in the fall for those same exact sports. After we are done, we have youth football coming on and using them. We have soccer being brought in. In the spring, you have multipurpose fields on Pride Field where the baseball team and track field, track teams use those fields. Lacrosse uses our side facilities. We are packed. Now, with the change in start times that we're gonna have to endure, practices are gonna be pushed back. We're gonna need more field space to get our kids practicing at earlier times, so they can get home at a decent hour. I know Mrs. Maglio was talking about the young kids here needing to go home and do their homework at 7:15, but if you talk to Don Marquette, him and I agree that that's when these kids will start practicing. So it's just not about like the high school kids, it's the whole entire town. That field is put in with the turf will allow for more practice space for just not the McMahon kids, but also for all the kids in town. It seems like a common theme tonight has just been about recreation and play. I know the Bay Ruth teams, which I was a part of, have excelled. They boosted state tournaments. Don't really know the last time that softball state tournament was boosted because they don't have a facility. If you are canceling games, you can't do this. That's just not fair to the girls in this town to play softball. And I mean, I have Alila right over there and I have some of the other girls. They can probably step up here and talk about how disappointing it is that they can see their classmates, the guys, coming out there every day and practicing and having a great time, and they can't play. Talking about Coach Pierce with the tennis courts, we wouldn't be able to have a state tournament or match at our facility because it wouldn't be safe. And it's problematic, as he was saying. I invite any of you guys, I really would love you guys to come to McMahon, walk around, kind of share a couple things about the tennis court. But as he said, it's gonna rain a lot tonight. If we had a tennis match tomorrow, we wouldn't be able to play because the way that the drainage is set up, there's just a wash-up that takes place. And mud just spills those courts, and it's a really, really, really sad situation for those kids. So let's just check this. Yeah, I think I pretty much said everything, but thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Rod River. There, there was a design study done, and there's budget to redo that for the, I'm for the girls, but for the boys too, for the Cal Ripken, and the younger kids seem to not have quality too. What is your interpretation of that?
Well, when I was playing, there were six littlebies in town. The Broad River Field is actually, my great-grandfather's brother, George Bushbaum, was the coach that took the teams to the league World Series there in Bedlam. And he would probably say that'd be a great thing. I think it'd be a great thing too for the young boys. But I mean, I think it's time that we think about the girls. I mean, I think that's really important. But I mean, I would be all for the Broad River, but I was talking to Mr. Robbins the other day. One of the things we're kind of disnowing, that's what Mrs. Hopkins was talking about, is like, we lack that draw, we lack that draw in order for big opportunities where we can host events. Like our FCAC track meet tomorrow is in New Haven. We have to go to the Hill House, the FCAC, because there's no facilities at all. And that could be some, an opportunity down the road that might be great, where Norwalk puts up a facility where we can host track meets and other events here to bring in dollars, as Mr. Fosina was talking about at West Rocks, with bringing in a lot of different types of soccer tournaments, possibly lacrosse tournaments and so forth. So I'm an advocate for athletes. I'm an advocate for the kids. It's a great avenue for kids to become leaders, as you can see with Sidney, how great she did. It's a great way to build lifelong lasting relationships. And every kid who is an athlete has another adult in their life that can make a impact. And if you talk to most people, they probably remember their coaches and their names a little bit more than some of their teachers' names.
So do you think what we're doing for the girls is enough? Does it need to be bigger? Does it need to be so that they can have tournaments, that they can hold things, and give them the same opportunity?
I would imagine that once that field is turf, they would be able to have games. I don't know if you'd be able to host a lot of tournaments. You could if there's lights. Some towns have three or four, you know, turf softball fields. But you're never gonna be able to host a tournament in this day and age when there's a threat of cancellation, cancellations. I know at the Bay Ruth Games, it could pour rain at 5 o'clock, except at the end of 5:30.
Right, yeah, you know that. So is the funding for the girls softball or the turf softball field, is that have lights? I haven't seen like the full proposal for it. Does it have lights? Does it have? Maybe we could get a copy of that sent to us for backup?
So where we are now, the RFP went out to design.
Speak to them.
The design was given after we had a short list of interviews with the consultants. And then the design actually takes place from now, I think the timeline is between April, and then the final design will be delivered to us in August. So once we have that, that design, we will include, make sure they have lights and everything's part of that. Again, with turf fields, we want to make sure we maximize the playability of it, which means lights and bathrooms and everything else. It really isn't the point of doing a turf field if you don't have lights because you don't get the extended hours of usage out of it.
It's gonna be good dugouts, good scoreboards, not this like half-baked approach, right?
I mean, all those things will be part of the design, and then come back as a cross estimate, and then be in the same place next year looking for funding for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
My name is Jody Sandler. I live at 72 High and Avenue. I don't have that kind of history to follow, so John is a tough one to follow up on. But I'm here in support of the turf field at Bryan McMahon High School. I have three children. One's a sophomore and one's a freshman at McMahon, and one is a seventh grader at Robbin Middle School. And I'm, you know, surviving as a parent of three teenagers right now. And I would tell you that, you know, it's tough in this day and age with all the distractions, and we need them outside, right? We need them outside and playing the courts. Social media, video games, streaming TV, all that is available all the time. So when it rains and, you know, 35% of the games that the softball field are canceled, well, there is no one to do that for that, right? So we need to get the players back on the field sooner. This is especially important for the kids that live in the very urban areas of Norwalk and the ones that live in the high-track areas. And the majority of those kids go to school at Bryan McMahon High School. And I was here asking for money when the baseball field was turfed, the baseball field. Now, on that baseball field, all my daughters' JV soccer games have been played there. I am there with the, all my kids play three sports, so I am there anywhere from 6 o'clock in the morning until 10 o'clock at night. It doesn't matter if it's 10 degrees, 100 degrees, raining, snowing, any conditions. There are kids out on that baseball field, and they are kicking a soccer ball, and they are blocking a field hockey goal. Whatever they need to do on a field, they're out there. Again, not on their phones, not watching YouTube. So I don't want to think of this, it's very important. I have two daughters to play softball. I want that field for them, but you have to keep in mind that this is a multi-use field, just like the baseball field is. And the kids are using it, and if you go there any time of day, you will see kids out there trying to get better at what they do. And as other speakers have said, that is the difference. How many times you kick a football, kick soccer ball, you know, catch a baseball, or swing a bat, swing a field hockey stick, that is making a difference, and that's why the teams are doing better. It's truly, that baseball field is 365 days a year, always in use, all ages, but not the softball field. It is, Mr. Matt Ferry, the former athletic director, is the one that told me 35% of the games for the past couple of years have been canceled. I know the younger girls that have played there, I can tell you exactly where the pedals are and how to clean them. We try to make the field playable, but you know, it's really hard. There'll be days where we have to cancel games for two days from one rainout because you can't drive. So I'm gonna ask you again to please find one more turf field in McMahon. It's very important, it's important for the kids that live in South Norwalk, who have very good space to play. And it's very important for the kids in McMahon to have a place to go practice any of the sports that they want. So please improve the field. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Salchak. I live at 5th Farm Creek. I'm here to talk about the softball field, and more specifically to talk about Title IX. I did not see this as an option for Norwalk to push it down the road, but I feel like Norwalk is out of compliance with Bryan McMahon in terms of section of Title IX. And it's very specific in terms of the number of complaints and the common allegations that come up for Title IX. And looking at it, and you see specifically more and more federal case law being cited that goes along the lines of, it's not just that, it's the field service quality, so turfing is one issue. It's the dugouts. If you look at the Bryan McMahon dugouts for baseball, they have coverage, they have nice benches. They also have batting cages and pitching warm-up cages, which are not present at the softball field. The scoreboards, you have scoreboards which show pitches, which show innings. The scoreboard field for the softball field is broken. It's broken lots. I have pictures of it, if you want to see the pictures. It goes down to the fencing, it goes down to equipment storage, the audio equipment, the press boxes, et cetera, bathrooms and other facilities. And the scoreboard should be in compliance, the lighting should be in compliance. And what happens is that you have multi-use fields. So baseball and softball is where most educational facilities fall foul, and towns fall foul of Title IX, is because the other fields are multi-use, so there's a quality. So as soon as you do something brilliant for baseball, you've completely gone out of whack in terms of what's available for boys and what's available for girls in terms of the sports. And so the Office of Civil Rights of the Department of Education- And so, the Office of Civil Rights of the Department of Education is very willing to come out and do a full educational review of secondary schools as well, which they have done since two thousand nine. There's a whole bunch of track lakers of them having to deal with both baseball softball issues as well as federal law, which happens more and more frequently with municipalities, with schools and everything else. So, I'm urging you to say you need to bring this into compliance with Title Nine. It's been a law since nineteen seventy-two, we're in twenty twenty. These improvements were made not only at Bryan McMahon, but I would also urge you to look at whether you're in compliance with Nathan Hale because that's also a turf baseball field. So, what is the equivalent softball facility there? And one of the issues might be is because it's Central Park and Rad, that it's not under the domain of the Department of Education, which normally is thinking about Title Nine and has that more top of mind. So, you have a lot of requests for fields, but the obligation is still to be in compliance with your spending to make sure that there is not discrimination, gender discrimination in how that is spent and what the experience is for people. And it's also covered under the Constitution in terms of equal protection for genders. So, that's where it falls in for municipal. So, I would urge you, it's easier to do it the first time around and get it right and get the budget centered or there's alternative remedies where you have to find the funding.
Thank you. Thank you. Can I ask a favor? Could you, some of those points that you made with the secondary school and the federal and what you just said, is there any way you could put that in an email and send it in to Steve?
Yeah, I can send it in, I mean, you can look under Title Nine Specials, it's there, you can look under, you know, the case laws all out there.
If you put a letter in, I think that would be good. I have another question for Nick. So, all of those things that she just mentioned, those are all on the plan for the girls so that they have the same as the boys? The scoreboard, the pitching nets, the dugouts, the covered dugouts, the, there was one other thing she mentioned which I-
We have not done the design yet, but as part of the process, we can include all those things and make sure that they have the scoreboard and dugouts and everything else that is mentioned.
Okay. So, the design comes back, we put this money in the budget, do we put enough in the budget? Is that gonna be enough to cover?
As far as the design, they'll give us a cost estimate, but we think a million dollars does cover what it is to actually build it up, make it, you know, equivalent to making this noise.
It always seems fair. And then the follow-up on the Nathan Hale thing, has there been any discussion about Nathan Hale doing something as equal with the girls?
I, no, I'm not aware of it at this time, again, I've been here less than a year.
I know, I know. Ken, have you been hearing anybody talk about Nathan Hale?
You mean, at, yeah, Nathan Hale?
Doing for girls softball as well?
Right now, the closest softball field to Nathan Hale will be Norwalk High. So, we did have a preliminary look with the designers at Norwalk High and it wasn't feasible because of lack of power or backup, enough water to put a turf softball field there, which is why they chose Bryan McMahon.
Okay, but the boys have it there at Norwalk?
The boys have the baseball field at Nathan Hale.
At Nathan Hale, okay. All right. Just, thank you.
My name is Howard, I'm a little nervous, Rose. Also, here in support of the turfing of the McMahon Field. I have three daughters, two at Orange Elementary, one at Wood School, so they'll all be coming up to the high school, but I urge you quickly, so I also feel some of the toes of Jody's shoes as managing the Little League softball program. And I feel also better than Steve programs. I feel availability is a problem at all levels, but if you go to surrounding towns, their little league level fields are nicer than our high school fields at McMahon High, which needs constant maintenance to try to get ready for games and then having to cancel our games. And so, people still may not be able to play. It's very hard for me to explain to my daughters why the boys feel like there's so many students on this, so please don't worry. Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Doug Martini, the athletic director at Norwalk High School. I'm here to ask guys to consider replacing the track at Norwalk High School. One of our student athletes, Dylan Consalot, you saw him earlier. The track itself is twenty years old, it's been patched and repaired several times, it's been repainted twice, but it's really at the end of its useful existence. The surface is worn to a point, it is slippery, not safe for the kids to be on. When you look at all the facilities at Norwalk High School, I would venture to guess that the track is the most used facility at Norwalk High School. There are many days I'm at school at six thirty in the morning and I leave at nine o'clock at night and there's people jogging and walking the track at six thirty in the morning and there's people here at nine o'clock at night doing the same. And that doesn't count the physical education classes I meet during the day, all of our athletic teams that are there after school, all community users who use it, weekends and evenings and so on and so forth. So, it gets a tremendous amount of use and it's really to a point, you can't do much more with it in terms of the repairing and patching and things that we've done to this point. I would also echo my support for the softball field and tennis courts at Bryan McMahon. We were in the same position two years ago, the Coach Pierce was in it with cracks and water and we spent the whole season on the road. We could not host any matches at Norwalk High School. They started to do some repair work and they were basically slaves to the weather. If it rained, they couldn't do any work, if it was wet, they couldn't do any work. And it took pretty much the whole spring season to repair the courts and our boys and girls spent the whole season on the road. So, there were many times McMahon would have their match in four to seven and then the Norwalk match would start at seven PM and you were trying to get it in before dark. So, you know, their courts were quickly approaching to set, so ours were. Again, we're very, very grateful that the city was able to find a project where we had our tennis courts replaced at Norwalk High School and they are now state of the art. And speaking to my girls tennis coach this morning, we've already had thirty-six girls registered to try out for the tennis team, just excited about new facilities and so on and so forth. The softball field, I will also tell you, I know it's been very difficult to maintain at Bryan McMahon. At Norwalk High School, we do have a grass field, we do have dugouts, we do have fences, we do have a pretty good playable surface. We tend not to have the issue with rainouts that they had at McMahon. But I would also tell you that this spring especially, teams are playing twenty game schedules in a seven big time span. That's the same amount of games that the fall season was fourteen weeks long, so the season is half as long with just as many games. So, I know my colleague, John Cross, and I can both attest to the fact that, you know, our schedules are jam packed in the spring. If we get poor weather or rainy weather, kids are gonna be playing four or five, potentially six games in a week, just trying to make up those games that were missed. And that's unhealthy for any of the kids, definitely play that kinda schedule in that short a time span. So, you know, we know, my job isn't all rainbows and sunshine sometimes and I know you've had a lot of requests here tonight, but I think, you know, if you were to really take a look at what we're requesting, it's not only for the high school athletes, but the community athletes and the city of Norwalk in general. Again, we're very grateful for the work that's been done to this point and if there's a few more things that we can get done, I'd be greatly appreciative.
Go ahead. Sure. We were big supporters of the tennis courts and we're probably, well, I can't speak for everybody else, but I'm a supporter of the track court. I think that we're under a lot of confusion right now with what's going on with Norwalk High School because there's talk that those tennis courts are now gonna be full of construction trucks when they start the build out. So, I, like, are we gonna put all this money into the track and then are they gonna be run over? I mean, I think like some of these conversations have to be had before our meeting with some things submitted to Steve because it'd be a shame to put all this money into this and I believe in it and I really am, I'd be one of the people voting for it. But we have not had much clarity over what is going on with Norwalk High School. I mean, tonight was the first time we even saw that this money had been put back into the, that even, we didn't know. So, I think maybe a conversation could be had with some maybe material over that and how that could look and what that means and I think that would be beneficial for us for our next meeting.
I would agree, if you're not gonna take a project like this, I think there needs to be, keep that in process in terms of what the plan is for Norwalk High School versus what we have right now and where, you know, what it's gonna look like going forward. We've been fortunate enough, we've hosted a lot of league games, league tournaments, state tournaments, and I'm told several times by opposing coaches, boy, you have a beautiful facility here, we feel great, great pride in that. And again, we're very grateful for the commitment the city has made, but I think we'd all be forgotten, you know, here from now, you know, we're gonna tear this down and tear that down. So, I would agree with you in this, Ken, that's the conversation needs to be had.
Okay. Mike?
No, I'm all right.
So, thank you and it's a little off topic, but it's hard for us when we're getting the Norwalk stuff because we're, we don't have all the information.
Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioners and residents in Norwalk, my name is John Skidmore and I'm from Eight Logan Place. And I'm here to support, ask your support for the softball fields and the renovations for the tennis court at Bryan McMahon. I have two daughters that go to, one to Bryan McMahon, one that will go to Bryan McMahon. But I'll be brief in my comments, I'm fairly pointed. I'm asking you to do your fiduciary responsibility, but your moral and legal responsibility as well to support Title Nine so that the female athletes have the same opportunity that male athletes have. I happen to benefit athletically when I was growing up. I want all those same opportunities for our girls in this area. Thank you.
Commanding you guys do this every Wednesday night?
No.
Once a year. It's a lot, once a year. Evan Lester on forty-three Allen Drive in Norwalk. I have three children that, one graduated from McMahon and two that are in the Global Studies Program now. All athletes, marching band, multiple sports. My son is an avid tennis player and is on those courts a great deal. He's a sophomore this year, so he can't wait until spring to get on the courts. And a court has to be flat, it's got fractures, cracks, it's almost not safe to play on. They've already spoke about it multiple times, so I won't keep it, it's already getting late, but I urge you to, you know, the court should just be just a regular court, it's not even that, it just has to be brought up to speed and to par. The multiple course field, you've already heard, so I urge you to reconsider that or to consider that also. You mentioned real quick Broad River having to do, does that mean the fields there or the courts? Because we go down to the Broad River Courts to play on the weekends and they're even worse than the McMahon Field.
I think it's the design of the whole, I haven't seen-
It's just the athletic fields that we're talking about. Not the tennis court.
Because there's two courts there that we go down just because it's close and it's easy just to hit the ball for half an hour and there's grass growing up from the courts. You know, a lot of people from the whole Broad River, Silver Mine community go there. The Silver Mine Elementary School, their courts are so bad, we came to go there. So, we go to the Broad River Courts and they're, they're almost unplayable, one's unplayable. And so, if that's ever in the project or thought, there'd just be more courts to the public for the town. Last thing, you mentioned corporate sponsors for fields and stuff, because we, I've traveled all over the East Coast for soccer tournaments and for basketball tournaments. I've never seen, I've seen banners put up on fences, so I guess local restaurants and companies, probably through booster clubs and whatever else have put up banners probably to get the teams money, not field money, but whether or not that's ever a consideration certainly help you. But if, you know, I've never seen Cablevision Field or Verizon Fields or whatever, but it's a great idea.
You've been pushing that for a while. Before you step off, so in the design, Nick, are, what is gonna happen? We're gonna design that area and I didn't really think of this, what will happen with the tennis courts there?
At Broad River?
Yeah, yeah, this is for Nick actually.
So, can I correct me if I'm wrong, but the study is just funded for the athletic fields, does not include the courts, correct?
Correct. Depending on how the design goes, they're gonna go get the tennis court also to see if they have to be moved or maybe shifted in order to make room to fit three fields at Broad River. So, we'll have more information on the design case.
Okay.
So, does that mean shifted, does that mean it can be eliminated?
Yeah, or does that mean like can they be redone and part of the-
Until they start laying out the fields, to see how the field's gonna be laid out, we really can't, we really can't talk, it's too early.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
So, I just, then if that's all new to me, so it would be a surprise if I came by and then there's three fields but no more tennis courts, then-
We're a long way-
Duly noted.
Duly noted though.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying up this late and everyone in the audience. Diane Morishawa, Taylor Adams. Three items that I wanted to speak on, the first is, I'd like to see if this commission, and I'll be asking Finance and Claims Committee and Board Investment Taxation to direct our Recreation Parks Department to look at programs for corporate donations. I did not know legally we can fund everything with corporate donations, of course. You would have to have a list of standards for ethics and social responsibilities. For instance, we don't want a vape product company funding fields for play, play. So, I, you're, as long as you have standards that and you have a group assigned on reviewing the donors, there should be no problem, even including the pianos. Corporate donations, as long as it's a well-managed and ethically administered, should be a great way to help offset the taxpayer burden. And the thing is, the staff, and I'm not expecting Nick or Ken to be experts on corporate donations, we can find and have a consultant hired. I don't believe Josh has that background in the Marisale Office, I wish he did. Second thing is the vehicles. There's vehicles up to, I think, two seventy-five. Again, I do not think, I'm not sure, but I didn't see the backup, so I don't believe there are electric vehicles. I know some, even the light trucks that are used to empty the trash, I do not see why that we can begin having electric vehicles in all of our departments. It's something I've mentioned for years, I'm getting tired of mentioning it. I'm so happy that Chris Smith came up to me after and said from the fire department, if we would scale this up, then we all could afford maintenance, we'd have training. So, I'd like to know from Nick and Ken, why this, it's a very, it's a large amount, not a lot of vehicles, I'm sure. The main reason I'm here tonight is on the issue of artificial turf fields. It's not the first time I've been here, in front of the parents. I am an advocate for sports, I'm an advocate for Title Nine sports. You wouldn't know it by looking at me, but when I was in high school, I played JV and varsity, field hockey, softball and swimming, which I did swim for, swim training. Of course, it's not on the field, but the thing is, what I am now is an environmental consultant. And I have brought up numerous times to the right people that we suspend spending one more dime, and these vote for at least a million, at least a million a shot. Not to mention, what is finally coming up is the replacement of the turf fields and the extra added cost that towns are having for the materials that have to be dumped when you replace a turf field with another turf field. The thing is, what's being found is that the turf fields, the infill, they sub straight in the bottom, unless it is something other than rubber, and there are some other products available, that Nick Roberts' predecessor, Mike Moeh, was supposed to study and present to you and the health director. I've yet to find out that that's been done. The reason why it's important to the parents, it's not that I'm, I'm not insensitive to your need to have fields that are safe, that play well and that you can compete with other schools. The problem is that adults are putting your children's health at risk. I know a lot of parents have told me, their children come home like at Bryan McMahon, there's a turf field, the old fashioned type. there's a turf field, the old-fashioned type. Their children's ears, eyes, nostrils, and mouth, and any scrapes they have are filled with tiny rubber balls. They're finding this is a problem as a health issue. Out west, especially with college soccer, with girls, they found that the girls that spend the most time on the ground, which is the goalkeeper, have gotten, there is actual facts, that they've contracted certain kinds of cancers. I'm, those of you that know me, I'm not one to cry wolf or say the house is on fire. The material used for the blades has been found to contain PFOS, perfluoroacetal substances that we're now getting concerned about finally in Connecticut. The thing is, I've asked former health director, I've mentioned to our new health director, Nick and I have not had the discussion yet about turf fields, or we will. Ken knows about it when he was the interim, and Mike, okay. I put a letter to previous mayor, this mayor, and I just want to say that you are responsible folks. We need to suspend spending one more dime until we have a third-party independent review of the health issues. Now, one of the problems here in this city is we don't have enough fields. There are places we can put additional natural turf fields, but we have to fund the personnel and the care of those natural turf fields. They're overused. And secondly, we have to make sure that the drainage is done selectively and using green infrastructure, so it's not as expensive as putting pipes everywhere. I'm not opposed, and I heard all the discussion about Broad River, and Bryant McMahon, and Norwalk High School, and all the schools that are listed here. At half million or 2.5 million a shot, that's a lot of money. And the thing is, we have to look at the safety and health issues finally here. The waste products that happen, we have to get rid of them. And lastly, especially with climate change, it's getting hotter into the fall, and hotter earlier and into the spring. And those turf fields, and I'm not making this up, they heat up and kids get heat burns. So what we have to do is behave like adults, save our kids' future health problems, they have listed some. And I ask that you ask Nick Roberts, and Ken, and our health director, in less than a week or two, to find independent people to come and speak with you. It's a, it's a health crisis that could happen. I know that Blumenthal, our senator, requested a EPA before Mr. Trump was elected, that they do a study. I don't know where that is, it probably was buried and not happening. And our state needs to take a look at it. They've run away from this issue, because it's so popular to put in turf fields. So the time has come for this city, for this fiscal year cycle and beyond, to just take applause. There are different ways you can mitigate the fill, the infill, the underneath. You can use different types of material, but we're not doing that. We just want a turf field at any cost, but it shouldn't be at the cost of our children's health. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Neil Potterman, with the Three Dollar Youth Road in Norwalk, and the president of the Norwalk Girls' Youth Softball League. So you guys know history about facilities, the fields that we use, another question. So, the Girls' Softball League in Norwalk, Nebraska, is 1984, might have been recreational youth softball league for girls ages four to fourteen. We also provide travel teams for ages eight to eleven. We play, our house league plays in the spring. We have travel teams that play in spring, summer, fall, and also athletics, and we do workouts for essentially a year-round program. The, last year, we had 225 girls in the program, combined, when we combined it for the waiting softball league, there's over 300 girls in the city of Norwalk who are playing softball throughout the spring, and then at least 100 or more will play travel ball throughout the summer and fall. The fields we use for all our practices and games, we use three elementary schools, Marvin, Riverside, and Merrimack. We use two middles, I'm sorry, two high schools, Marvin and McMahon, and we use Capital Field at the Little Park. All right, so softball does not have currently a turf option, and is the only field sport in Norwalk at this time that does not have a turf level, turf, I'm sorry, a turf option at any level from grades K through 12. All right? Every other field sport at some level in the city of Norwalk at this time has a turf field option. And why doesn't girls softball have an option? Why shouldn't girls softball have that option? Why is girls softball the only field sport in Norwalk without a turf option at any level? When I say any level, you know, youth level, middle school, high school, every other sport, lacrosse, soccer field, football, baseball, they all have a turf option, softball is not. So our house league plays its games in the springtime, and that's when most participation takes place amongst the girls in Norwalk softball. As you know, that's also when we tend to get the most rain. Okay, we get a lot of rain. And some of the, some of the fields we plan take days to dry out, and when we get a good soaking rain. Now, you can play a soccer or a lacrosse game in the rain on a non-turf field, and definitely you can play the day after, but that is not the case with softball. Softball game fields are all dirt. All right, so no grass, there's no grass game field like in baseball, so when that dirt quickly becomes mud after the soaking head rain that we tend to get throughout April into May. All right, there's a lot more dirt on a softball field that needs to dry out than a baseball field. So aside from the challenges that we have, of course, drawing out the fields so the girls can play, there are numerous issues we face that each of the fields can play on. For example, our youngest players play at Warren Elementary School. There was like four, five, six, seven, eight little girls who were introduced into the sport. All right, this is their first time playing softball. That field traditionally, annually, it's covered in weeds. It's an embarrassment for our girls to play on a field covered with weeds. A few years ago, Parks wrecked it, you know, allowed us to dig up the field and lay down the dirt, and sure enough, the weeds popped back up, the field's covered in weeds. Again, it's an embarrassment. It might even be a turnoff for some of the parents to see the field, because the three young girls are playing out for the first time to play softball. The fields at Riverside and Merrimack, they have issues of their own, specifically the grading of the outfield. Where at one school it slows up, the other school it slows down. The field at Ludlow is simply dangerous, it's not in good condition. I've had countless parents, coaches complaining about the condition of the field over the years, mostly about how hard the field is. It dips into the grooves that form the infield, in the dirt when it dries after the rains as a result. With added balls confined up and taken on natural roughs on the dry hard field, and that can cause serious injury. There's only so much Parks wrecking to do to properly care for it and maintain that field, that's just in rough shape. We do talk about that, but it's, it's just a difficult field to maintain. As John mentioned before, the field at McMahon, you know, it's been plagued with grading issues of its own, with an uneven infield, with dips near the bases, home plate, which needs to be reset every year. And when we get those soaking rains, as was mentioned before, and they occur frequently at the end of the spring, the field at McMahon can be unplayable for days. So we lose that field, and reschedule games, it's unsure yet, there's another rain, the league does as well. I've been to many youth softball fields in Fairfield County, probably at least several in every town in Fairfield County. Every other town in Fairfield County does it right, with well-maintained softball facilities. And that included similar-sized cities such as Stanford, and Danmer, and Bridgeport, which has a beautiful, fully-used turf softball field with lights that is used throughout the swing in summer and fall. So why not Norwalk? Girls deserve a better playing option. Again, softball is the only field sport in Norwalk that does not have a turf option at any level from K through 12. The softball players in Norwalk deserve a quality turf field of their own. So my obvious vote and desire is to see funds approve the building of that turf softball at Bryant McMahon. It is so important, the confidence and the development of these girls, to have a softball field in a safe playing condition, so that they can be proud of. That will cost very little to maintain, which can be a showcase field for hosting teams from out of town, or even possibly at the tournament. And I'm very confident for years to come, that that field will be used every weekday evening from April through October, and every Saturday and Sunday from morning well into the evening by all of our ages. A year ago, you guys approved that we are designing, which I talked about before, that was a great first step, to fill us with optimism, a lot of hope. We're all thrilled about that, so our ask and hope here, of course, the funds will be approved this year for the next step, which is the action, you know, the construction of the field for softball on girls in Norwalk, so they can have a complex of their own that they proudly call home. So let's be right by the 300 softball players playing in our right piece, with that line item for the turf field back in the budget, let's build this field for our girls. Thank you.
I must be short.
You gotta do, you gotta do down there. There's a thing.
It's 10:10. Do you know where your children are? I'm a teacher, so, I, my name is Michelle Suda, and I'm a child's ring in Norwalk. I have the honor to be seen in front of you, because I was once those little girls playing ball. I started playing at eight years old, I played on every field in Norwalk. I've been coaching here at Norwalk for 27 years. My high school coach, Ray Barry, from Chonak High School, is the instructor, brought me on right after I graduated college, and played ball in college. I am here to support the turf field at McMahon. Again, you keep hearing Title IX, this is a serious issue that needs to be addressed. I was fortunate to coach in another community nearby, and it came up. And when they came out to assess the high school situation, what they found out was the sport that had made the complaint actually had more than the softball team. So they had to build a new softball field, a couple batting cages, and then a beautiful facility. That is the concern. I mean, putting a turf field in, which we can call a multi-purpose field, because that's what it will be, will be minimal compared to when they come out and assess the situation. It's unfortunate, I don't have to say too much because Neil covered a lot, but the fields are atrocious. I still have scars on my thighs from coaching, teaching children how to slide in Merrimack. It's like they put dirt on asphalt. That's what that field is like. If you've ever had that opportunity, skinned up, trying to show your kids how to slide, and you're barely coached, are you okay? Lila, who's speaking, one of my former players, she could tell you, Art Smart does a nice job when they're working maintaining the fields, but when we're out on the field at McMahon, Norwalk High, wherever we find a field to play, and it's raining, and we try, we need to get that practice in, we'll come, we'll come with breaks and kitty litter, and we will manually break that field because, because the conditions are so poor. So I'm standing up here asking you, not only to fund the turf field at McMahon, but fund, and in real world, fund all athletic facilities, because these children need the space. As I said, with the change in start time, that will impact a lot of athletes in this town. So please, again, as a former player, as a coach who given back for 27 years, as an educator, as someone who loves the game of softball, please single these children and these girls, because it is not equal. There's no equity between the boys and the girls in the game of softball. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patricia Edwards, I'm a wife and a rich lady, and I'm here to support the turf field. I'm the mother of two daughters, one's a senior at Bryant McMahon, and one is seventh grader of Rosewood, who is a softball player. I'll be brief, because I was a high school and college athlete in the 1980s, and I cannot believe in 2020, we're making an appeal for funding and saying it's time to think about our girls. It breaks my heart. Please consider that. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Roger Silva, 180 West Rock Road. I'm the president of Norwalk Junior Lacrosse. We have over 300 currently registered players ready to play this spring season. We use two facilities, two venues. Best part, which Parks America does a great job of helping South of that, and it's ale. Problem, best part, of course, as a lot of colleagues have said, is when it rains, it's just unplayable. And we start in the spring, and we start in late March, and that's when the rains come, and we can't play, which means we start later than our neighboring towns. So our kids are at a disadvantage right off the bat, because we can't get enough fields. So I'm here to support the turfing of the softball field at Bryant McMahon, and also the initiative at West Rocks, and think that would benefit not only our program, certainly all the youth programs in Norwalk. As many of my friends have said earlier, Norwalk's basic, and we should represent our city like all the other towns represent their cities. We should be proud of it, and should have facilities that shows who we are. And we're surrounded by affluent towns, and we're no different than they are. We need to show them that. Our kids deserve that. They work very, very hard on the fields, and we want the best for them. So I think Parks America's doing a great job, and I ask you to please do a recon for us. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lila Yama, I love a tennis court. I'm the waitress to this, the, one of her kids she coached. I've been playing softball at Everstil Field, Cranberry, Marvin, McMahon, Norwalk High since I was about four years old. I played on playing at the College Rebel, and it's always been a downfall, because the fields have been so bad. We've struggled getting practice in, we play practice later at night so that the rain isn't affected, like Miss Suda said, the kitty litter we bring. And it's just not fair to us to see all the baseball boys at the field with the batting cages and everything, and us stuck in the gym. Girls' sports at McMahon have not been the greatest. I know that softball has not won more than five games since 2012. I think that a turf field would be a great aspect to that, because we could go outside, we could hit in the batting cages outside, we could have lights, we could have practices later. McMahon has just inputted a new weight room person, and they've just now opened up an option for the girls to use the weight room. I think that things are evolving, and that girls are getting more opportunities, but it's still not enough, and I think that they should improve that, and I think that the softball field would be great for them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to, I, I realize that I'm not here to speak again, I just, who is here that didn't come up that's in support of the turf field at McMahon? I know those people that are not speaking, I'm trying to save you time, actually. There's a lot of people that left because it's very late, so I just want to make sure that you understand that this, this is minimal who spoke, who are here to support it. And where do we send the written? Because I had a lot of people leave.
Steve Kleppen.
And ask me where we send this information.
Steve Kleppen. Steve Kleppen. Can you give, um, Steve Kleppen's, he's right there. Can you give your card out so people know?
Sorry, there's a lot of people that are supporting this, I couldn't get my phone up.
So I just have a question for Parks America. The issue was raised about thinking about health and safety issues. I don't know if you'd like to address that now or at a later point. Clearly, there's a big demand, but I'm sure people want to do it in the safest fashion. Can you comment to the comments that were raised earlier, or provide some information regarding that?
I'll just say, turf fields have been around for 30-plus years. There's been evidence and data, of course, both sides. It's abused at every single level, from these companies, to schools, to professional fields, they all use it. I don't think, I don't think that there's a, a huge safety risk of advising would have shut all those things down. But again, like I said, there's been data on both sides of it, and again, we can, we can ask the health department to get their, their feedback as well, but we get a pretty good discussion.
We had that discussion as well, knowing, we had the line item by line.
Yeah. Okay. But I, I want to just make a comment and observation on it. First off, safe and healthy issues, you want to talk about that? It's kids sitting on their couch, playing on their cellphone, or holding their phones to the ear and everything else. Much more worried about that than my son playing on a turf field, and, but I did not hear one person here, except for Diane, have any concern over turf fields. So if there is one person who would like to vocalize that, I would like to hear it. I mean, as a parent with a kid on the turf field, I don't really have too many issues with that. So you have... So you have, I would like to hear that. So.
Hi, my name is David Malbert. Cindy is my daughter. We live in Poughkeepsie.
You can bring that down. You got to do the thing in the middle.
Or you could just take it off like David did.
I just read a number of articles about artificial turf, and I know there are a lot of different options for the fill of the artificial turf. So I think it makes sense for us to at least look into those options. I'm not overly concerned. My daughter wouldn't be on soccer fields five days a week. But I do think it's worth looking into. There have been studies that have shown that, you know, there are issues with a lot of goalies, goalkeeper, as she said. And I've read multiple articles about that from different sources. So I do think it's a concern. I think it's something we should at least look into to differentiate some of it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, that does it for Parks and Recs. Okay? So we have, next on the agenda is the, please, please comment outside, people. Please comment outside. We have economic and community development. Is anybody here to ask questions about that? That's next on the list. People, people who are leaving, please have your conversations outside. Is anybody here to speak to economic and community development? This includes business development and tourism and arts commission. Okay, seen none? Thank you, whoever was here. Yeah, somebody raised their hand before. We have transportation, mobility, and parking. Anybody here to speak to that? Okay? Thank you, guys, those who stayed here all the whole time. We have public works. Anybody here to speak to public works?
Just have to find where my notes are. Anyway, Diane Morisella. I'm going to defer most of my comments because it's late hour. Sorry that DPW was waiting. But one of the things, again, is the fleet replacement. Now, I do know that there was, for some of the fleet, I think it's under C2 operations, that some of the fleet will be a hybrid, non-plug-in, but a true hybrid fleet replacement. But again, because I did not see a backup before tonight, I'm very happy we'll have backup posted. I really can't comment further other than to say we should be looking at citywide even electric vehicles, and then we can scale it up and it would be less expensive. One thing that I have not seen, and that is the main reason I'm here tonight, well, two things, is the under C1, under engineering, under public works, you skip down to stormwater management plan. So I would love this commission to put a caveat and a challenge to the staff in order to insist that they look for green infrastructure and not always go just to the traditional engineering with pipes and underground retention bases. They're more expensive add-ons. Some green infrastructure can actually be an enhancement, reduce our climate footprint. It does require maintenance, but once you get the heck of it, it shouldn't be so bad. And it's a way to save some money, and it's a case-by-case project thing. So it's about almost a billion dollars. Other towns like New Haven has got this going on. It would be terrific if you would influence our staff to go big time on looking at every project as to opt out, whether they can opt out of green infrastructure. I know we're going to be doing that on the parking lot of Webster. I've been told by myself to look at those plans. So I'm assuming we're having some rain gardens. I don't know. Then the last thing is what I don't see on here. And it's something that I am working on, talked to Anthony and others about just recently. And that is the issue of having adequate recycling containers around the city in less than a physical fashion in our parks, enough in our city buildings, not hidden from view, and side by side with the trash containers. There's nothing in here for that stuff. Now, the actual trash hauling is an operating budget item, but the equipment to organize it is missing here. And again, it's time in our city to try to reduce the cost to the taxpayers by having facilities that allow us to be able to easily get rid of mattresses, expand that program, and expand a lot of the programs. And I will be speaking with Public Works, committing to the Common Council, and financing claims because we're wasting money on that that you obviously need for the schools and the fields. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe I'll just say something real brief. I was happy to see about eight years ago, we worked with DPW, some of the people present, and Mike Yosek, who's left, I guess he went home, on the renovation of Cedar Street in South Norwalk. And it is, it is a model of green infrastructure. A lot of people don't realize that. That's actually near the neighborhood. And, but it's, all of the sidewalks are pervious, paved. All of the parking stalls are pervious, and there's green, the water goes into drains where there's trees planted. So the whole thing is kind of a green, you know, complete streets thing. And I realize that's one project, but it was, it was great to see DPW take, make the effort. And it's worked out. It's actually held up really well, when things considered.
Okay.
As an urban environment.
So we have Parks and Recs. Is anybody here to speak to Parks and Recs? Okay, I mean, I'm sorry, planning and zoning.
I'm staying for my thing too. I'm right there with you.
Thank you all for staying. On planning and zoning, the only thing I wanted to speak to is I think it's $200,000 for the regulation. I think we absolutely need to, I want to support that. I hope, we only spent about $100,000 for a P O C D, but I'm glad that we're looking at regulatory reform. A lot of people ran on that, were rescue officials. And I'm so pleased that it's on the, on the, but I do want to say one thing that is missing. I haven't had time to talk to Steve about it, but I did at length because it wasn't fulfilled, and that is when Planometrics was hired to do the preliminary work. And I really liked when Chalter thought they did a decent job. It's more than just organizing the regs, which is very important for use of use. What we did not do is have a focus group of environmental professionals like myself and others that bring you to bear. Because there are climate change regulations and things that have to do with environmental management that were not included yet under Glenn Chalter's work. Now, I'll make a bigger effort to advocate it for the next phase, which is actually writing the regs. But I do know that Steve had focus groups with the development community, the attorneys for the development community. And the thing is, the environmental community, again, was bypassed. It happened with the P O C D with the woman that was the Stan Tex representative. And Steve agreed with me that she kind of preached to us instead of hearing our ideas. So I just want to make sure that you have that. It's not an eco nutty thing. It has to do with environmental management, science, climate science, and ways that we could have a healthier environment, but also healthier for the people that use our facilities, and it would get us head and shoulders for it. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Can I close the public hearing?
Well, are you going to keep it open until next Wednesday?
I mean, yeah, I'm keeping it open till next Wednesday for written comments that people can submit.
You guys got off so easy. Usually, you're the big game in town.
So we're still, we're still in meeting, so. So we're going to, we're going to keep it open till next week.
I'm tired too. I have a lot of kids in the market, totally. Just really, really. We talked about the sidewalks last year, and I'm very grateful to be invited to be part of the pedestrian committee of the Bike Walk Commission. They conducted a study through the Health Department to receive comment around the issue of walkability in the walk zone of the radius of the schools because the school district took away courtesy busing. So if you live one mile from an elementary school or less, one and a half from middle school or high school, you're considered a walker. And this is particularly troubling as we move into the start time change because some children will need to walk to school after their parents have left school, except for the carber is providing programming before school, if they don't accept it.
After they left for work?
Work, yes. Thank you. It's very late.
That's all right.
So we are identifying priorities, and I understand it can take us 10 to 20 years to get where we need to be. But I think we need to have the political will to do the study and to really engage in a conversation. I know there are issues of homeowners not wanting sidewalks on their property because of the maintenance issues. We can also talk aggressively about whether there are some neighborhoods in which the city could buy the Bobcats to clear the sidewalks on the metro. You know, there are conversations that can be had to push us forward. And I'm not asking for it to happen this year or next year. I'm just saying, let's have the political will to get it done.
Okay, thank you.
Nice to letting us know that, actually. It's important.
Okay, so we have the next action on the capital budget. The public hearing is held open until next Wednesday at 5 o'clock. Do we have comments of the director?
Good night.
No? Any comments of commissioners?
No.
Okay, so make a motion to.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second that.